I was on the phone listening to David Drake ramble about something.
Good evening, I'd like to call the June 27th meeting of the Planning Commission to order.
Thank you for that, Tom.
Welcome. My name's Les Tillery, I'm the Chairman of the Planning Commission. I'd like to just give a brief explanation of what the Planning Commission does. Some of you may, this may be your first meeting and just to give you a little brief overview of how we function. The Planning Commission consists of 12 regular members and two supernumerary members. Each member is a volunteer appointed by the mayor. The Planning Commission is made up of two subcommittees, the zoning subcommittee and the subdivision committee. Each regular member of the Planning Commission is assigned to one of these two committees. Each commission, each committee meets separately from this meeting. Zoning committee meets on the second Wednesday and the subdivision committee meets on the third Wednesday of each month at 7:30 a.m. On the seventh floor of City Hall. And these meetings are open to the public, just like this meeting is. The primary responsibilities of the Planning Commission are to recommend zoning ordinance amendments, annexation and zoning requests to the City Council, to adopt and apply subdivision recommendations, to approve location, character and extent requests, to approve city master plans, to approve right of, vacation of right-of-way requests, street name change requests and plat vacation requests. The Planning Commission is supported by an excellent planning department which reviews each item that comes before the board to make sure that it meets all the requirements of our ordinances, subdivision rules and regulations that apply development projects throughout the city. At this time, I'd like for the members to introduce themselves and we'll start down here on the right.
Donna Hendricks.
Carlos Matthews.
Kyle Collins.
Gary Whitley.
I'm Les Tillery.
Sally Warden.
Peggy Richard.
Kelly Scrimshaw.
Jim McGuffey, Planning Department.
Alright, the first item on our agenda is the adoption of minutes.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, we're gonna move on to our public hearing portion of our agenda. We have a big crowd here tonight and want to assure you all that your comments are important to us. I would ask that each person come up to a microphone on either side of the room and state your name and your address for the record. And then you'll have an opportunity to make your comments. I would ask too, that if someone has already made a comment, that you would not repeat that same comment. We, we listen and we take notes and when we get to the discussion part of our agenda for each item that's being commented on, we'll, we'll talk about those and make sure we have those comments addressed. So, having said those ground rules, let's get it started. First item for public hearing is Brownstones at Twickenham, a re-subdivision of Quigley map, a minor.
Brownstones at Twickenham is located center city, east of Meridian Street and north of Pratt Adder Avenue. This item is Zone C3 and is approximately .394 acres.
Is there anyone here to comment on Brownstones at Twickenham, Twickenham, a re-subdivision of Quigley map, a minor? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item two is Freeman Square, a minor.
Freeman Square Minor is located southwest city, north of Bob Wallace Avenue and east of First Street. This item is on heavy industry and is approximately .92 acres.
Is there anyone here to comment on Freeman Square? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item three is Friendship Commons, a re-subdivision of lots one and two of Friend subdivision.
Friendship Commons is located northeast city, south of Winchester Road and east of Homer Nance Road. This item is Zone C4 and is overall 43.55 acres.
Is there anyone here to comment on Friendship Commons? Somebody need to comment? Just go to the microphone and give us your name and address.
My name's Nora Walsh, I live at 135 Alpha Lane.
Yes ma'am, what are your comments?
Did they do a survey on our property when they made these plans also?
No ma'am.
Okay. And are, is there gonna be like a retaining wall behind my property and is this new development? Or a fence or some kind of sound barrier?
Are you south of the property or?
I am right beside Homer Nance.
You're right beside Homer Nance?
Right on the corner.
There are no regulations that therefore say that the fence or a buffer, if there is a issue as far as slope, then a retaining wall would have been established in the preliminary. This item is before you currently for layout and this item is a conceptual design of what their intent is. And their intent is to develop 11 lots. And this is a depiction of those 11 lots. I can go to... So currently, this is the depiction of what they intend to do and the preliminary plans have not been approved just yet. So this is the first step. Once a preliminary is established, you will receive a secondary notice and the engineering portions of, if there are retaining walls or drainage and things of those natures will be more established in the preliminary set.
Okay, and are they gonna make me become city because I am county on where my little area is?
Only if you decide to annex.
That's our choice?
Correct.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Is there anyone else here to comment on Friendship Commons? Yes ma'am.
I'm Tammy Wolf, I live at 129 Alpha Lane. I have a cemetery next to me. I have, the last 30 years been trying to keep people and stuff out of it. Do y'all have any intentions on blocking it off from the backside with this new subdivision?
That would be a private matter considering that it is not a part of this particular subdivision.
Okay, what about the ditch that runs through there that? Are y'all gonna fix it with concrete, y'all gonna dig it up more?
At this point in time, this is the conceptual design and if there is intent to improve drainage or so, that will be established at the preliminary. And those plans have not been reviewed just yet.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on Friendship Commons? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item four is McMullen Place Phase 6. Is anyone here to comment on McMullen?
McMullen Place Phase 6 is located southeast city, north of Little Cove Road and west of McMullen Lane. This item is Zone R1A and is approximately 15.5 acres. This is also in the Slope Development District and continues the development of McMullen Cove.
Is there anyone here to comment on McMullen Place? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item five is Providence Phase 10.
Providence Phase 10 is located northwest city, north of US Highway 72 West and east of Providence Main Street. This is a part of the Providence PUD, is in transect four, which is primarily residential and is overall 9.17 acres.
Is there anyone here to comment on Providence Phase 10?
Well, people, the land on this, how many acres is this? Is this for the apartments?
Ms. Reed, would you give us your name and address for the record? Thank you.
City Hall is my address. 303 Jack Coleman Drive. I moved in here before they tear this place down. Anyway, it's 175 units and it's apartments?
No ma'am, this is Providence Phase 10. This is not what you're reviewing.
You're not on the Monticello thing yet?
No ma'am.
Okay, that's why I'm waiting for that one. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to comment on Providence Phase 10? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item six is Trailhead Huntsville, a re-subdivision of tracks four and five of Chase Creek Park.
Trailhead Huntsville was before you for layout in April of 2017. This item is located northeast city, south of Highway 72 East and east of Morris Mill Road. This item is Zone R2A, also R2B and is overall 358.75 acres.
Is there anyone here to comment on Trailhead Huntsville? Yes ma'am.
My name is Keela Watts and I live at 142 Hollington Drive. My question is, the way the plat map shows the development, it's the west side which will be the second phase of the development. It seems to be connecting up to our neighborhood and the three roads that actually are dead ends on our neighborhood are Bridgestone and Barkwood and Shadow Brook. And I wondered, people are kind of like water. They go, they move to the easiest trail. They're just gonna go to the easiest way out of their neighborhood. And it looks to me that the west is about two-thirds of the development and those people, on average people have two cars, will be exiting the closest way they can get out of their neighborhood which puts them in our neighborhood. And my question is, is that the case? Are they going to open those roads up from the Chase Shadow neighborhood into the new track?
Via the layout, those, those streets do tie and those are ties for fire, water, protection, policing. Those are all connectivities that planners seek to have. And as for what we see, is that there will be a new entry, entrance and exit off of Morris Mill Road which would be the first established road going south. I can zoom into the depiction here.
And you're talking about that as the only entry and exit on your property and then the only other entry and exits are Chase Shadow?
Right, and we foresee that to, most people will go east, west before they go east.
Why would they? Because it's, it takes more time and more energy and that road actually cuts back toward the mountain and then exits where you can be so close to Old Gurley Road just to run right through our neighborhood. It's much closer. And I don't know anyone that wouldn't take a shorter route. So you're, you know, if you have an average of two cars a house and that's two-thirds of the project, you have 140 cars coming through our exit now, just one road.
Well currently, that would, this would establish two new roads and 70 individ, 73 individual, or homes to go west before this tie occurs. I foresee that the individuals that, or planners foresee that the individuals on this particular road, because of some of the happenstance, they may not go east. They may go, they will go west first to get to Morris Mill prior to taking, going through a residential neighborhood. The roads created are not residential, the road that is created that would tie to your subdivision, it would not be a residential road. It would be more of a collector road.
You know, this is one of those situations where after the fact, it's like, too bad we didn't realize this was going to happen? Because the truth of the matter is, everyone will go to the quickest way out. That is the truth, that's human nature. And the quickest way out is our neighborhood. So someone has to, I mean, no one's ever gonna monitor it. Once it's set in place, it's set in place. And it's never gonna change. And that's the only reason I came to this meeting. Because the traffic will go through our neighborhood. I know what you're saying. And I've worked with developers before, selling real estate in new development and human nature is to get out the quickest way possible. And that's exactly what they will do and that puts them in our neighborhood. Because there is no way that anybody can sit down on your plat map and tell me they are going to actually drive up toward the mountain to go down your exit when they can go zip and they're on Old Gurley Road. There's no way. I mean, I think anybody would know that, common sense.
I am no traffic engineer and I would suggest that I can have the traffic engineers speak with you to voice those concerns because they more will be able to answer those concerns better than I.
It's not just the traffic, it's also the wear and tear on the road, who maintains it? So if we end up with half again as much traffic or more on the same road in our neighborhood, if you go on Old Gurley Road, it is the queen of potholes. And that's what it is. And that's what you're getting ready to put on our entryway, that kind of traffic.
Thank you ma'am, we, we will discuss this when we get to the, our discussion point. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Is, is the traffic engineer here?
Good evening, my name is Nicholas and I'm the traffic engineer. The number of lots that will be on that based on planning is about 210, 210 homes. And the projected number of vehicles for that, for that subdivision will predominantly be going towards the city. A lot of people be going in towards the city for jobs and the like so we don't anticipate any traffic or very little traffic to go through the existing subdivision. It's not the least path of resistance. They'll go through the new roadway and the signal to get into the city and to go towards Morris Mill.
I'm sorry, but that's double talk. It, thank you, that's double talk. Because all you have to do, if you have common sense, is to look at two-thirds of your neighborhood is so close to Old Gurley Road through our neighborhood, they are not going to go up the mountain and come down. Anyone with common sense could see that.
Ms. Watts, thank you for your comments. We have heard your comments and we will talk about those when we get to.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to comment on Trailhead Huntsville?
Catherine Bryan, 226 Shadow Brook Lane. And I just wanted to, I'm not piggybacking, but I did at the original meeting bring up the problem about traffic and road conditions and I was promised that people were gonna come out and look at Old Gurley Road and Hollington and as far as I know, that has not been addressed.
Okay. When you say, when you say come out and look, sorry, what?
I mean, like she said, and again, I'm not piggybacking, but the quality of roads out where we live is in pitiful shape. And if you're thinking about you're gonna add all these hundreds of cars, whether or not they come through Chase Shadows. At the first meeting, I was told that our road conditions were gonna be addressed. They're just, they're in deplorable conditions.
Okay, thank you.
One quick comment. You know, when I come in here to these meetings and I hear...
Ms. Reed, I'm sorry.
The only thing I'm asking you, how do you come up with this stuff to go on this agenda? The big developers come and lay it out a plan to the planning department? Is that the way it works? I'm trying to figure out how government works, I've yet to find out. So you, you take what the big developers say and you present it to the planning and they okay? And then you bring it to these people here and maybe they want to hear the public? When you don't have all the correct information from engineering to planning or what you need to do to take a vote? I'd like to know.
I can give you the, I can give you the process. We have, we have...
I think I know.
Well, you've asked, so I can, I can answer.
But this lady had a lot of good sense, common sense, and I like common sense. So when y'all take a vote, think about some of these people. I love people that's a city, but I'm sorry, I don't trust them. Thank you.
Alright, is anyone else here to speak on Trailhead Huntsville? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item seven is Twin Creek Subdivision.
Twin Creek Subdivision is located northwest city, east of Indian Creek Road and south of Douglas Road. This item is 109.15 acres and is zoned R2A.
Is there anyone here to speak on Twin Creek Subdivision? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item eight is The Waters.
The Waters is located southeast city, north of Martin Road and west of Lake Forest Boulevard. This item is zoned R2B and is approximately 19.44 acres.
Is there anyone here to comment on The Waters? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item nine is Whitesburg Estates, Jackson Bend Edition Phase 2 zoning plat.
Whitesburg Estates, Jackson Bend Phase, Jackson Bend Edition Phase 2 is located southeast city, west of South Memorial Parkway and north of Rothmore Drive. This item is zone R2, R1A and is overall 50.74 acres. This item sets restrictions on the property to set a minimum lot area of 12,000 square feet, a minimum lot width of 75, 75 feet and is, to also establish that only single-family detached units are allowed.
Is there anyone here to comment on Whitesburg Estates, Jackson Bend Edition Phase 2? You all are, okay. I would, I would like for developer, Mr. Enfinger, is, is he here? Could you, could you comment first and, and give us the...
Chairman, I will like to address that this is for the zoning plat and then the following public hearing will be for the subdivision.
Right, so we have nine and 10 are basically the same and so I would anticipate that we would only hear public comments one time. So we don't have this comment on the zoning plat and then the same comments on the layout. So, let's, let's just... You, you will have an opportunity to make multiple comments, but I would appreciate if you would not make the same comments at each, at each item, okay? Alright, so we'll, we'll, we'll do the zoning plat first, so Mr. Enfinger.
Half of this subdivision is, is already in the city and half of it's not. And half of it is currently zoned 1A and then of course, half of it's not zoned. We have asked for the plat, the parts that's in the city to be rezoned to R2 and we have, and the parts that's being annexed in the city, we would ask for it to be R2 as well. We've restricted both requests to comply with Residence 1A zoning in that the lot size is the same as 1A and the lot width is the same as 1A and it's restricted to single-family detached housing, just like 1A. The only advantage to us in going to R2 is we get a little bit more flexibility as regards to setbacks on the side and setbacks on the front. But that's our motivation. This is a low-density development, it's 43 acres and we're putting in, it's 44 acres, it's putting in 43 lots. It'll have a series of lakes around the lots that, similar to the Jackson Bend Phase 1 that Mr. Gann put in a few years ago. This will have a series of lakes around the lots. And it, it's just, it's going to be, it's housing that'll be, it's, you know, from a conceptual perspective, sort of from 350 to 500,000. So it's a real nice development, it's complimentary to the existing neighborhood and we ask for your support.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, happy to answer questions from the commission and I expect I'll have an opportunity to answer questions from the, from some of the neighbors.
I'm, I'm sure you will. Okay, so, anyone here to comment?
Whit Robinson, I live on Rothmore, got a couple of questions. If he has a sufficient land to do the 50 lots, why do you need to make, change to 2A which could possibly put it into a different zone?
Can I, can I interrupt you just one second? We didn't get your name and address.
Whitney Robinson.
Whitney Robinson.
2033 Rothmore Drive.
Thank you.
From perspective of 50, 40 something acres, putting this many houses, I think you could do a minor correction to get as easement rules rather than changing it to 2A which could preclude it going into, somebody else turning into some other type of division. You have to put six foot of soil in there. I wonder if anybody has done the year-long study with the Alabama Environmental Agency to determine with water, we have a lot of problems with mosquitoes. You put in more ponds. I think that the, you're required to do, the last time I checked, it's over a year study to do the environmentals. Secondly, we have the same question about highways. If you put that many houses back there and it goes Zone 2 and by chance, by chance, it's not going to haha, it may go into apartments, you could end up with, you know, 200, 300 complexes. The roads going in are long, you might have a fire hazard even with the, with the apartments right now because you don't have that much access. You're going back well over a mile and a half to get in there because I jog it. It's very slow, but it's pretty far back. Those are the same, those are the issues I have, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So Murph Langland, I live at 2421 Rothmore. And in the interest of saying my comments, one, I do have some zoning and plat issues. I oppose the change in zoning from 1A to 2. It is not necessary or warranted for the amount of land being developed. 50 acres in this case. Jackson's Bend was built on 32 acres and the minimum lot size was 15,000 square feet. A small group of residents met with the developer last week and when the developer was asked if he had an alternative plan, should the zoning request for Zone 2 be denied, he stated he did not need a different plan. If based on his own words, he does not need Zone 2 to move forward with his plans, then I would suggest this committee and the City Council should not be compelled to move, to approve the zoning change. The development needs to be like the nearby neighborhoods and all of it should be zoned and developed as 1A, no changes in setback requirements. The city planning manager has stated that the city has a water mitigation requirement, that all of the water runoff before and after development must be the same or less with no increase in water displacement. If so, has this analysis been performed on, on the current state of water displacement before this development begins? That's probably the same issue that the other previous gentleman was talking about. I'm not aware of that. What is the amount of runoff on a graduated scale of increased rainfall today? Will that data be available to the public? Is the analysis, if the analysis has not been completed, then I suggest the analysis should be done before development begins and the results made available to the public. Water displacement is a major concern. Lessons learned from the engineering design and development of Tamra, the Whitesburg Estates 10th Edition and Jackson Bend, emphasize that water displacement from the street drains needs to flow directly into retention ponds within that development. The new development plan shows a culvert and drain system just south of Lot 1. This would flow into a shallow ditch adjoining the Jackson Bend property line. Today, that shallow drainage ditch has a minimal requirement to discharge water from the backyards of two homes. The proposed culvert and street drainage system would result in a much larger amount of water to be discharged into this ditch due to the increased street drainage from the new development. The larger volume of water would then encroach on the boundary of Jackson's Bend and potentially erode and deteriorate the earth embankment of our largest lake. In addition, the larger amount of water displacement from this proposed culvert and street drainage design requires all of this water to empty directly into the blue line ditch. The blue line ditch at this location already has standing water that averages between four and 10 feet deep at all times. It is never a dry field. The drought last year did not dry it up. This will result in more standing water on the boundary of Jackson Bend. We already have enough issues with water drainage and displacement within our property boundaries without having additional water displacement from this new development. The street drains for the new development need to be designed for all of the water displacement to empty directly into the retention ponds established for the new development. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Yes ma'am.
Hi, Susan Layton. My husband Bill and I live at 2002 Danbury Circle. We have, we're at the opposite end from Jackson Bend 1 so we have a little bit of a different issue about flooding and flood mitigation. Our home is currently at one foot above floods, flood zone. Drainage in the area is provided by a culvert that runs east-west from the parkway to the floodway. In the 25-plus years that we have lived in that home, that culvert has been cleaned completely one time. In addition, north of that culvert, our home is exact, our home is exactly on the south side of that culvert. North of that culvert, there have been three big box stores built. There has been an apartment complex built and then came Grissom. At each one of those planning meetings, we were told the drainage will be improved. And that has not yet happened. When Grissom was put in, we were reassured that that drainage culvert would be cleaned and the floodway improved. Did not happen. They came out, they cleaned the north side of that culvert, more or less. They added three or four large storm drains into the culvert to accommodate the runoff from Grissom into that culvert. And then when they got down to the west end of the culvert, they graded it, added one more storm drain to add some more water to the fun and it emptied into the floodway. The floodway is nothing more than a swamp. And this property is in the flood fringe. Your own flood mitigation plan and storm water management plan state that you... that you will take action, the city will take action to try to prevent building in the floodways and the flood fringe. This is directly in the flood fringe. Now, I understand there are going to be retention ponds. But the problem with retention ponds, our property is right at the corner of Danbury Circle. It back, it almost touches the drainage culvert. The pond is going to run right next to it. Hey, I'm thrilled, lakeside property, that's what I've been told. But when that lake gets full, that water's going into that drainage culvert. That drainage culvert cannot accommodate what's already going into it. One of my neighbors was going to be here tonight, but it looks like he wasn't able to attend. He's at two thousand Danbury Circle. His property has flooded twice because of inadequacy of that drainage culvert. Both times, he had to claim on his flood insurance, which we're all required to keep. I can tell you right now that our homeowners' insurance policies are not going to be happy when we tell them, well, we're just going to add a little more drainage out there behind us. I understand that the post-development runoff is supposed to be equal to or less than the pre-development runoff. That water never goes anywhere off that field, that water is standing. The only time it ever goes anywhere is when that was farmed and then it would absorb. So we have a significant problem in the flood plain and the flood fringe. And we want the city to just take a step back and do some preventative care, get that culvert fixed, take a look at how much runoff's going in there and realize that there is an approval for a connector road from Hazeland to Redstone Road with an adjacent greenway. And that's going to be more concrete drainage runoff. And guess where it's going? Right into that floodway that is not improved. That floodway is basically a little creek with constant standing room, standing water and flood fringe on both sides that are always underwater. So that's our main concern. I have one more short concern I will address. I've been unable to tell from the plat whether or not there's a tree line that runs on the south side of the drainage culvert between Whitesburg Estates and Grissom. Right now, that is the only buffer we have between us and Grissom. They fire up the lights at Grissom, my backyard looks like I'm in a prison yard. So the noise and the lighting, we would like that tree line to stay. And I will point out that that tree line is inhabited by a ton of wildlife to include migratory prey birds, which are covered by a federal migratory bird act. So those are our concerns. We don't want to be underwater and we don't want you taking our trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Lawrence Fleming and I live at twenty-three twenty-six Rothmore Drive. During the rain crisis of December twenty fifteen, all the land was, was underwater and the water level threatened flooding the entire neighborhood. This is an existing backflow, this, there is an existing backflow pipe located in the middle of the empty field that created a geyser of water shooting several feet into the air behind the existing homes of Jackson Bend. The plan for ponds in this development needs to incorporate this backflow pipe within the planned ponds to prevent similar occurrences for whoever caused the pressure from the water buildup to create this event. It appears from the proposed plans that the east pond does not cover the area where the water geyser occurred in December twenty fifteen and needed to be modified accordingly. Will there, will these two bodies of water on the new development adequately handle potential flooding if one or another similar rainfall occurs without adversely impacting or encroaching current Whitesburg Estate or Jackson Bend property owners in our common area? What recourse will we have as individual owners or as an HOA if they don't?
John Missavage, two four oh nine Tamra. I'm here on behalf of the people that live on Tamra in our HOA to support any previously stated information to the board and any existing or what's coming. Appreciate it.
Kathy Pareek, twenty-three twenty-three Rothmore Drive. Water drainage is, for the proposed development is a concern. About a year after we purchased our home, we started receiving letters from the city engineering that at least a portion of our property is located in a special flood area and it lists things we should and shouldn't do so that we don't block or detain water flow in the area. It also says the city as a flood protection activity acquires and clears high-hazard flood areas and converts the land from damage-prone development to public open space and greenways. Part of this proposed development abuts the floodway, the other part is in the flood fringe. City of Huntsville employees have stated due to various issues that have arisen over time in regards to water mitigation and displacement, that the Jackson's Bend area should have never been approved for development by the city. Whitesburg Estates old timers talk about this area flooding years ago. Now here we go again with another development being built along the city sewer line with the potential of standing water above the sewer line, which could be a problem. Because of problems with wat, water mitigation, we have had acres of dead trees and our homeowners' association has incurred increased costs for water drainage. There is a strong evidence that the water mitigation plan for Jackson's Bend and Tamra that was initially approved by the city of Huntsville for these respective developments was not properly constructed. When Jackson's Bend was built, we were in a drought situation. We aren't now, but we've already had water issues with normal rainfall levels. What happens when we start having higher than average rainfall? It hasn't been tested and you want to build up more land and add another development to the mix? And how is Grissom going to affect all of this? Also factor in the issue we've had with beavers. It's like we're playing with fire or in this case, water. Because the last two water mitigation plans for Jackson's Bend and Tamra have had several problems, we don't feel it's unreasonable for the city to require an independent audit of the proposed water mitigation plan prior to acceptance. Thank you.
I'm Leon Allen at twenty-two twenty-five Rothmore Drive. And I will not comment on the water, but I will comment on the traffic. If you look at the subdivision of Whitesburg and Harris subdivision, there are three hundred and eighty-nine houses in that subdivision. There is one road that you can go north on coming out of that subdivision. You can go south on Rothmore, but you cannot go north. Now you're going to add more traffic here. I ask the question, why doesn't the developer go back out the other way with some traffic also?
So yes, Patricia Caraway, twenty-two zero two Tamra Circle. And for about an hour on Monday, I sat at the Mythwood and Parkway intersection from seven AM to eight AM. And keep in mind, this is a summer month, school is not in session. So in the span of the hour, there are about ninety-one vehicles that turned left onto the Parkway from Mythwood. The average length of time the light stayed green for traffic turning left onto the Parkway was approximately ten seconds. The average wait time for the light to change to green was approximately two minutes. The longest of the line of vehicles was ten cars deep. Again, keep in mind, summer, no school in session. Several vehicles blatantly ran the light after it changed to red because of the short time span for them to cross over. The planning commission needs to keep in mind that, you know, this is during the summer and school is not in session. What happens when you add forty-three homesites? I'd expect eighty-plus additional cars if you have two cars per homesite and school is back in session. I would expect a significant increase to the traffic on Rothmore and Mythwood getting onto the Parkway. Has the city considered the safety of pedestrians and the children with increased traffic flow and the lack of sidewalks? Because Mythwood has no sidewalks, Rothmore only has sidewalks on the section that was added on the Jackson's Bend addition. So you need to keep in mind, of course, about the increased traffic flow. And has a traffic study been conducted about this? So thank you for your time.
Sir. My name is Robert Wright, I live on twenty-four twenty-one Rothmore. Most of us original homeowners in Jackson's Bend have always known that there was a potential for this development to occur. Our development and builder, John Gann, pursued to purchase this property years ago, but it failed to materialize. This parcel of land does not need rezoning for the developer to be successful. All he is doing is preparing the land and then selling lots to prospective builders to recoup his initial costs and profits for the purchase of the land and infrastructure. He's trying to pacify us by saying he will still honor the single-family dwelling, the minimum twelve thousand square foot lots and the seventy-five foot lot width requirement. If he has trouble with his part of the development, zoning will have nothing to do with it. All the risk in his initial plan to rezone is being passed on to the builders and potential buyers. A good portion of the lots are going to be eighty by a hundred and fifty. Most of Whitesburg Estates today is at least a hundred feet, at least in the front. I don't know about the hundred and fifty. Nobody desires to purchase a single-family dwelling home that is closer to the street, closer to their neighbor's structure with a shorter driveway and only one off-street parking. That person today can live in the urban setting that you've, you're creating here in downtown Huntsville where they can potentially walk to work, to parks, grocery stores and other amenities. The only thing you're going to be able to walk to from this home development is to the new high school. The initial buyer might not realize the consequences of the future, or the initial buyers might not realize the consequences of the future proximity of their neighbors' dwellings, much less the limited parking. And not all the lots are equally desirable, so it might take a while before the houses are built and potentially sold in a timely manner. The lot size is smaller than Jackson's Bend and therefore, the homes will not have the same appearance as Jackson's Bend. Therefore, the zoning needs to be, remain the same as Jackson's Bend to cover all zone one A requirements. If the developer is granted zone two initially with the restrictions applied and then runs into some difficulties, he or another party could amend the original restrictions and create something the neighborhood finds undesirable. Today, the lot sizes could be replanned to larger sizes if the developer wanted to make these homes appear similar to Jackson's Bend. If this development is to be called Jackson's Bend addition, then it should attempt to look like it. At completion, Jackson's Bend contains thirty-five homes on thirteen acres and nineteen acres of common area with eleven of those acres being retention ponds for a grand total of just thirty-two acres. They are working with fifty acres of land and putting in forty-three homes. This developer is very experienced and very successful. He should put his best foot forward on this project. The people in South Huntsville deserve as much. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Name is Peter Robear. I live at nineteen twenty-two Edington Drive. Edington Drive is a cul-de-sac that comes off of Sockville. My concern is the traffic that will be added on Sockville coming over to get out of the subdivision on Mythwood, which somebody just mentioned. Also, my concern, the point they made, and it's a good point. Once all the overpasses are completed, the second red light you come to after the overt, new overpasses will be Mythwood. And so the traffic is already bad getting out of there now. Once you have that flow of traffic coming down, it's going to be extremely bad. Somebody mentioned common sense a while ago, common sense needs to be applied here.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is, my name is Carmen Covey, I live at twenty-three twenty-four Rothmore. I have an issue and a question, I guess. The issue has to do with Lot One. The proposed Lot One is going to be built on what is, what is called a farm road. And it, right now, is our only access to get to part of our common area that they use to, that tractor goes across to mow and whatnot, just west of our west pond. So we, we're basically getting landlocked, which is against Alabama code. The developer said that he would offer to let us drive our tractor across their proposed walking path, but would require us to build a road on his property to get across the ditch to get to our field. So it still doesn't seem like a viable solution for us. So that's my first issue. The second one is a, is a two-part question. There is a proposed walking path, which according to Mr. Enfinger is going to be concrete being built around the new subdivision through the forest, which he says he thinks is wetlands. And so issue number one is are you allowed to put a concrete walking path on wetlands? And number two, if you are, who is responsible for maintaining that walking path? Is it going to be the new homeowners or is the city then going to take on responsibility like they do for sidewalks?
Thank you, ma'am. We will, we will, we will discuss that and answer that question at the appropriate time. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Tim Payment. I live at two thousand five Danbury Circle and have done so for twenty-eight years. I have a couple of observations and a couple of questions. And I don't know if this pertains to the plat or the layout or the zoning, they seem to be blending together, so I thought I'd go ahead and say it now.
That's fine.
My first observation is that there is no connection without Parkway access out of Whitesburg Estates or English Village or anything south. And so that's touching on some of the same issues that were made, but it's just a fact. Neither by vehicle nor bicycle or on foot can anyone south access Grissom. There's no, there is no way to get there. Okay? That's the first observation, unless I've mistaken. The second is I understand there is a connector to the west to connect Grissom Campus or the road that goes past Grissom down to Redstone Road. Am I correct in understanding that that is in the works or in the planning and would have a greenway in conjunction with that? Can anyone confirm? If, if so, if so, I do commend the planning commission for attempting and hopefully implementing some type of connection with a greenway with bicycle support. I think that would be a great addition to the general green plan. However, I would then ask my first question, other than is it happening? Is there any access plan to this new greenway and this connector road from anywhere in Whitesburg Estates or English Village, either by auto or by bicycle or even by foot? Or is it simply going to be a corridor that, from which the community is insulated? My first question. And then a second question I would raise is a property has now entered the market that would allow the connection of Roseberry to Meadowbrook. That would be the first potential access north that I'm aware of. And I don't know if that's anywhere on the planning docket, but I wanted to simply raise some awareness that the dead end now at Roseberry, at, at one time we thought might be a connector to have some chance of getting north and without everyone going onto the Parkway. I think history has shown that while the Parkway is built to handle a lot of traffic, if it is the only path, it's a path to trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Susan Hawkins, I live at twenty-one oh one Robinwood Drive. I am on the east end of this discussion. Would everybody who is here to address this from Whitesburg Estates, raise your hand? So you can see that this neighborhood is not happy and we would have more people here if this meeting was a little bit later. Unfortunately, we have people that couldn't make it. There are a lot of questions that our neighborhood has on all of this. You have heard everything that's going on with the southern part and the water mitigation issues, which, that what they haven't told you is that that neighborhood association has had to pick up the bill to solve these problems because the city did not. From our perspective at the east end, there are two ways to get out of Whitesburg Estates. One is Mythwood, which has a light. The other is Rothmore, which does not have a light. Now, none of this addresses that we are going to have the last overpass built soon and we know what a mess the Parkway is up north. So Mountain Gap, Mythwood, Rothmore, English Village, all of those areas are going to be impacted by the construction coming on with the Mountain Gap overpass. Nobody's talked about that. We also haven't talked about the fact that both Rothmore and Mythwood- We also haven't talked about the fact that both Rothmore and Mythwood, the access roads to the future building, which is going to have dump trucks and all other types of heavy equipment bringing in dirt to raise up this area that shouldn't be built on six feet, on two roads that are neighborhood roads. They are just wide enough now for cars to pass each other. We have children who play in these areas. We have people who walk in these areas. This is one of the quietest, nicest subdivisions in this area of town, probably in most of the area of town. It is old residence. We very rarely have a house come up for sale. I was the first person who looked at the house that I bought two years ago from the original family who built it. People come here and they stay. This is not a transitory neighborhood. So, what you are proposing really violates a lot of the family values that most of the people who live in these areas treasure. The other thing that I've been asked to ask you is, has an environmental study been done on this property before you even thought about changing the zoning? And also, have you thought about the fact with all the ponds and the streams and the water that goes through this area, that this is a natural water recharge area? Alabama has lived for how many years with a drought? We are just now starting to not even catch up, but sort of get in there. And if you build concrete and berms and everything else over a natural water recharge area, you are hurting the whole state, not just us. This community has foxes. It has eagles. It has bobcats. I mean, we've seen everything. It's a beautiful area to live, and I don't want to see it destroyed. I'm 66 years old, and I don't want to move again. So, please think about this before you vote on it. Thank you.
Quick overview, Huntsville, Alabama, the Rocket City, should be proud of the quality of life and income enjoyed by its citizens, many of whom are excited about a new housing development next to a new school named after an astronaut. The final cul-de-sac in Whitesburg Estate should match the existing homes or exceed expectations, not restrict crowd and reduce parking. Thank you. We are expected to care for and nurture all who are part of our common community. Accepting lower standards now promotes lower standards in the future. Please keep 1A zoning. Thank you.
My name is J.C. Gibson. I live at 22, 2042 Roseberry Lane. The city has a test well at the north end of this property for the styco chemicals field or whatever to test for Redstone Arsenal. And they put up a, a gate at the end of Sockwell, which used to be open, and we could go out in the field and drive on the field road or whatever, which was access to the back of my property to keep my fence line cleaned off. That's one question I have. What, where is going to be the access for the city to come take results from that test well? The other thing that I have a problem with, as people have already addressed, when Mr. Gann went over on the south side of Whitesburg Estates and built the new houses up Noel there, that tied into English Village. People don't understand how many cars in the morning come from English Village around Noel, out on to Rothmore, turn left and turn right on Mythwood. And now, we're going to add 80 something, at least 80 something more cars to Mythwood. And when the gentleman was talking a while ago about bicycling, getting across the Parkway and what have you, I don't think that when they build the two bridges at Meadowbrook and Mountain Gap, that we're going to have to come out Mythwood, we're going to have to go all the way to Mountain Gap, make a U-turn to go north on the Parkway, just like Charlotte Drive does. So, that's going to cut off of our exit coming out of the subdivision. Second thing, it may not, may not be in y'all's jurisdiction, but if you go up Sockwell Drive right now, the sewer line is caving in in the middle of the road for a stretch about 20 foot long and the width of the sewer ditch, because the sewer is undoubtedly leaking and washing the gravel out from under it. Now, Mr. Enfinger here, or either the builders probably, send concrete trucks and lumber trucks down through there, they're going to tear our road all to pieces because it's already in despair already. They came down there in the subdivision a few weeks ago and paved manassas. It didn't the more need paving and that grant, that dirt or that carpet right up there. But we paved one street and let everything else go. My concern is, is we're RA1. My house is in a floodplain. If you build a dam behind my house that raises one foot above my property, and we're in a 100-year floodplain, and you back that water up in my backyard and flood my house, I thought that was against the law, to turn somebody else's water on somebody else's property that's already in a floodplain. So, I don't understand that this, this property plus Blackwater Swamp that's going to be on the other side of Hazen Road was the runoff of the 100-year flood and the drainage ditch, and now, we dammed the whole thing up. So, what sense does that make? I'm not against Mr. Enfinger. I'm not against progress. I've worked with him on jobs before. But how many people are here that are opposed to changing the zoning from the Whitesburg Estates people from one to two? That's pretty strong. Like the lady said a while ago, if you come to the Whitesburg Association meeting, you'll see twice as many that are going to raise their hand. We, we request that you don't pass the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Robertson. I live at 8030 Lauderdale Road. That is north of the new Grissom High School in the area known as Chaffee Neighborhood. I know you've heard a lot about the drainage issues related to this subdivision. My issue is the drainage issue that we have out of Chaffee, which leads down through this area from something called the Lauderdale Ditch, which has been backing up forever. And I've told that it cannot be fixed because there's insufficient slope between Bird Springs and the Tennessee River to improve the flow. So, it seems to me that you're just going to add to our problem by letting additional water affect that flow here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Ellen O'Halloran, and I'm the owner of Lot Number 7 in the Jackson Bend community. I am told that if you allow the zoning to go forward, my backyard will be adjacent to Lot Number 1 of the new development, with only five feet separating the property lines. In addition, the construction of the last lot and the proposed widening of this little Jackson Bend Road may damage my retaining wall and ruin my pool. Jackson Bend Road will be the only entrance and exit to the new development, resulting in traffic congestion, how many dump trucks, how many of the new development residents will have only one car? I doubt it. And also, it will be a safety hazard for fire and medical emergencies. If you allow the zoning change, the resulting decrease in my property value will be further compounded because I now will, I am now in a flood fringe. I assume that everyone here knows that a flood fringe quickly becomes a flood zone for purposes of flood insurance. As for your proposed lovely retaining ponds, who will manage and pay for the maintenance and care of these ponds? Finally, why has there been such secrecy about this development? Not all homeowners received any notification letter, and only a very few received a registered letter about rezoning and flood information. If your decision is to change to Zone 2, remember all the existing problems. I hope you will not, all these problems don't come back to haunt you.
Thank you. I, I would ask, if you have some new comments, we'd love to hear them. But if you've got, just going to repeat other comments that have already been made, I would ask you to, to...
I have one thing to say. My name is Donna, Donna O'Halloran. The property, my mother's property, is 2400 Rothmore. If that's the case, I have some issues that I would like to piggyback on top of my mother's. They're not exactly the same.
Go ahead.
But you can go, you can assume that they're the same. But what I'd like to know then, if we're only allowed to say this one time, but these are issues that all of us have, when you go back and you're considering these issues, wouldn't it be a good idea to know how many of us have these individual issues and share the same concerns? If we're limited to only saying it one time, I don't think you are getting the full effect of just how upsetting and disturbing and how much of a problem we have as, as neighborhoods, as communities, existing as they are now, with this planned development and the rezoning from 1A to 2? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Clay Pareek. I live at 2323 Rothmore Drive. First off, I want to say, it's not our property, and as a property owner, he should be able to develop it and do with what he wants, as long as he meets all the city and county ordinances. With that said, there's no reason to set a precedence of changing from 1A to 2, because once it's in 2, who's to say that it won't down level or change within the status of 2? Right? My second question and point is, is as you come out Rothmore, they made it so you can only do a right turn and, and go south on the Parkway. Correct? Why did the city do that? Why? Because it was a safety concern, because they were tired of people cutting across Rothmore, making the left turn on the Parkway to go to work and to leave and to get to school and that. So, if you answer that question, if it's off safety, what's going to happen with Mythwood with the flow of traffic? And as already has been stated, the new development that is at the end of Noel that connected on to the rest of English Village, you already see that's added traffic flow that now comes through that, goes down Noel, and comes across, and comes out onto Rothmore, and takes Mythwood out. And so, from the logic of the other development about the shorter road and all that, believe me, people are taking the quickest, easiest path that they can get to because Mythwood's the only lot to get out of there, and that traffic will be backed up. The other thing is, as far as on the flooding in that road, that water, if it backs up, what's going to happen to Mythwood in that area? Anybody who drives out of Mythwood and Rothmore area knows, you look in those ditches after heavy rain, that water's right up in people's yards, right alongside even with the road. So, the city can tell me that that water's not going to rise up and flood Mythwood and leave us all stranded back there? And then, back onto the roads, all the roads are in poor shape back there. They've been pitted. We actually had to, to get the road repaired and go on to the one side to, to make sure it got fixed, because it was literally up two to three feet. Now, you're going to have big, heavy equipment going across there, first off, to develop the land to get it up to a certain height, and that's going to tear the roads up. Does the city have a plan to come and take care of all of our roads and the sewer lines? And for me personally, I'm not an engineer, and I don't live at Lot 7 on Rothmore, but I'm telling you what, to raise that land a foot above the floodplain, to be that close to property line, they're going to damage our property. And I would like to see an engineer tell me otherwise, because there's no way you can work heavy equipment like that and get it built up to where it's take a, a good-sized home.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Liz O'Halloran, and I live at 2400 Woffmore. I'd like to thank the council. I know we're running a little late. I'll be quick. I have some concern in regard to any developer that is going to develop this area. It is my understanding that the developer is responsible for the safe creating of these retention ponds and the maintenance, the making of the common areas. Now, even with the best of intentions, it is difficult to explain to a potential homebuyer that what might look beautiful and seem like a great idea in theory on paper, these beautiful retaining ponds and common area, in reality, to take care of these retaining ponds, something that's going to be so close to Grissom and the common area, this nice walking trail, that requires a lot of time, effort, and education, which I'm just telling you, most homeowners have no idea going into it. I would like a show of hands, really, from people here at Jackson's Bends and Tamara area, who here really knew when they went into this how much trouble it was going to be to maintain their common area and their ponds? It requires a lot of money, which we have to put out ourselves, which, you know, it's buyer beware. But looking ahead with this area that's so important, who's going to educate these future homebuyers in the danger of not being able to take care of these areas? Lastly, this result with Lot 1, I have a real big worry of this. When you build on this, this lot, which I don't understand why they're going to put it there, it's going to really drastically affect my mother's home and her quality of life. And I do thank y'all.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Kurt Meadows. I live at 2050 Roseberry. If you look at the cul-de-sac, my house is backs to the north of, of the lot up there. My house will be bordered to those homes. If you've ever driven down Sockwell, Sockwell is a steep hill from the very top. Past my house is built up four to six feet. My backyard, a ditch, a very deep ditch. With a cul-de-sac going back there, where are you going to build up from? There's no place to build up. You're going to have a slope. That makes absolutely zero sense. Either that, or you're going to have to change the entire road, starting from the front of my house, all the way back. You will have to elevate the entire road. I cannot see that happening. Either that, or you're going to have a giant ditch and a road cul-de-sac down at the bottom with houses with six-foot-tall driveways. I can't see that happening. That's, that's my major concern. You know, I know we haven't had as many, as many people here about that cul-de-sac, but that backs to my yard, and I just see that as a huge drainage issue, and I'm sorry to bring up drainage again. But where is the water going to go? Water, when it rains, it pours down that road, past my house, constantly. There is no place for it to go if you build a cul-de-sac back there at all. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm John Whitaker, and I'm at 2330 Rothmore. I'm right at the other corner lot by Miss O'Halloran. And anyhow, we're, we're going to be taking the brunt of all this equipment and for the next 10 years, for the development, for the new development, the infrastructure and then the houses. And I can't believe that that's not going to hurt... And I can't believe that that's not going to hurt my property value along with the rest of people back there. But who in the world would want to buy my house when you can't even step out in the street without, you know, concern of getting run over with heavy equipment? So, once again, I want to echo, why was there not a consideration to bringing that traffic, you know, extending it, having a road come out to White, to the, not Whitesburg, to the new, extension road? Why was there not consideration bringing that road in and connecting to this new subdivision? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make it quick. Jackie Reed. I live in everybody's neighborhood in the whole city. Anyway, I just want to say, from what I've heard tonight, the flooding, the traffic, and I'm down the parkway quite often, three or four times a week. I know what's going on pretty much down there as much as I do everywhere. But when you hear about these problems, I heard somebody say they live in a swamp down there and they're in a flooding zone. Why is the city not doing their homework before we allow? Why is our planning department not getting more involved? And why didn't we not do this or that before we're out here bringing up something, trying to change the zoning on something? If I were sitting up there tonight, I would not vote on this. This is a lawsuit fixing to happen. You better hear these people and hear them well, loud, and clear because it's serious. What's serious? I'm not against development, don't get me wrong, but what I see in here tonight, it's very serious until a city does their job down there and takes care of this flooding and maybe talk to the developer about the traffic going in a different direction. There's just a lot of things that the planning department needs to do with the developers before you bring it to all these people. I mean, I'm saying, if I sitting up there tonight, I'd be afraid to vote and I would not take it to the city council because I know what they do. So, there. Thank you.
Marshall Standifer, 10101 Cohaba Drive. My wife and I live at the corner of Cohaba and Mithwood and earlier commenters had already, have already spoken about the poor condition of Mithwood and the narrowness of that road. What I'd appreciate the council looking at is a safety concern there on Mithwood, just to the west of where Cohaba crosses Mithwood, that is a blind turn. With the heavy equipment that's going to come down that road to do the development out on the end of Rothmore, because that is the path they will go, again, the shortest path to get back in there, someone is going to get killed in that turn. Because regardless of what else happens, the heavy equipment is going to come through there at speed and they're going to make that turn and hit somebody in that turn. It's too narrow as it is. It's already been pointed out that that road has no sidewalks on it, on either side. None of that area of Whitesburg Estates has sidewalks because of its elevation and there's nowhere to get to. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Eric Post. I own a home at 2048 Roseberry, which is the second house in from Kurt's, where that little cul-de-sac's going to go. And if they have to build up those houses and the new cul-de-sac's six feet to make them above the floodplain, what it's going to cause at the backside of that property, which backs up to my property, a potential six-foot pond that's going to come up into my land, because there's not going to be, there's no drainage back there. All it is, is what's left of the Sockwell Ranch. So, if you have to build that up to put on a house, six-foot, both Kurt and my backyards that are there are going to be potential for a two, three, four-foot standing water, what comes in standing water. We have enough of those in, in the subdivision I live in, which is Jackson's Bend. So, I just have a real concern if, if that is indeed part of the developer's plan and he needs to develop and build up all of those backyards so none of them have standing water and provide proper drainage out of that area to the north, to the south, somewhere that's not going to stand in my backyard. It's, it's going to be a big problem and if that's, that, I don't know the solution to that, but to allow that to go in like it is, I don't think that's going to work. I really don't.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to comment on Whitesburg Estates, Jackson Bend addition, Phase 2 zoning plat?
I guess I'll give it a shot if you'll let me.
Sure.
First, I want to, I've been to several of these events and I wanted to just take a second compliment, everyone, for being courteous and I appreciate that. And so, I'll try to respond in the same manner now and in the future, but y'all have been reasonably, I mean, you've been nice in your comments. I don't think, I'm fixing to address some of the factual issues that I have with some of the comments, but as far as y'all's tenor, I certainly appreciate the approach that you've taken. Another coincidence that I'd like to point out, 30 years ago, when I was the job superintendent, I built all the homes on, that back up to this, on the Danbury Circle. And so, we were the developer of that subdivision and so, I'm real familiar with that particular street. My, my ex-wife and children lived on that street and we built them a house there and so, may have an opportunity sometime to show you all that, but I'm real familiar with the area. We developed and built the, the street that this backs up to 30 years ago. I can't address everyone. Y'all took an hour talking and so, they certainly don't want to listen to me for another hour while I talk back, but I'll try to, I'll try to just generally paint a picture about the issues that we talked about. One, there's been a lot of comments about the zoning and I said this when I first got up, but I want to say it again in a, in a very specific matter, in the planning department, some of you have a disagreement or want to talk about it, maybe we can take it one issue at a time, but they'll have an opportunity to address this as well. The zoning is really a minor issue and it's not, it has a, it's in front of this commission, we're going to ask for them to vote, to vote on it, but the, we've, the major parts of 1A zoning are staying, if I get R2 zoning, I'm going to restrict it to the front lot width that R1 is, the size lot that R1 is, and the use that R1 is. And so, the only thing I get out of rezoning is the setback lines as regards to front yards and side yards. It's just not a big deal and it's not a big deal to y'all. It's not true, it's, it's not true that...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Excuse, excuse me. Mr. Enfinger has the floor.
It's not true that once I deed, there'll be a zoning plat map that'll be recorded. And so, these changes that I'm representing to you are not something that you have to trust me on, is that they're, they're part of a zoning plat that will be recorded and go with the land. And so, as I deed these lots to build, to other builders and they're working on them, they're restricted to the same uses that basically the current, the current zoning is. I'll let, if anyone wants to argue that, I'm not sure, I've got a lot of credibility with you, but the planning department can, can confirm those statements if, if you find that to be necessary. The second thing is that I guess the big issue is, is drainage and there's been some, a lot of things that have been, we're not going to back up any water on anybody's land and we're not, we are, we, we, there are, there's a procedure that's been all around the city for decades about how to develop and every year, they get more and more regulations and we've got a thousand regulations we have to comply with. And so, from a drainage perspective, we're not going to be hauling dirt in to fill the site. The dirt that we use will be onsite. We're going to be doing all of the, all the drainage meets the current regulations that the city has. There won't be any reason to believe that it will be any more or less zoning, more or less drainage problems. As a matter of fact, of all the places that you could have drainage problems, this is the least likely because it has such a wide area to disperse water in. We just bought, myself and my two uncles bought the 400 acres west of this site and as someone mentioned, there's a lot of that land that's low. And so, there's a, there's hundreds of acres of drainage that are available for that property to relieve itself and it's not, so there'd be, whatever I do there can't impact any flooding. It's just is not, it's just not possible. But we have an engineer, Smith Engineering, who's here tonight, that if y'all want to ask them specific questions, they can. But as an overview, I'll tell you that we, we have a set of plans that completely complies with the city regulations or else we would have had to modify them before we get to this point. So, it's done in a, as proper a manner as we know how to do it and we comply just in every way. So, there's not, there's no real reason, there's no, there's, unless you have a specific concern, and I, and I judge that you don't because I didn't hear any, unless you have a specific concern, it can be addressed in a general manner. The, the lakes and the dirt that we're going to move can't impact any drainage that has to do with anyone's existing home. Some of the concerns, let me see, make sure I'm trying to catch everybody I can. The, the lady had an issue about accessing the Jackson Bend Phase 1 West Pond and what they currently use land that, that we're going to use for housing because we, we're about, we're going to close it and own it. But we're going to provide, we don't have to, but we're going happy to provide an alternate way for, for equipment to get to that back pond and cut that back pond. It may require a little bit of work in order to make it where they can access from our property to their property, but that's not an unreasonable request on my part. We're happy to provide ingress, egress easement for free to that home or association. There will be a connection, our, our walkway will connect to the Hazlen Road Extension that goes from the New Grissom High School down to Redstone Road. That road will be a four-lane road that the city hopefully will have under construction this year. In conjunction with that road, there's going to be a city walkway that'll be about two miles long that will run on the other side of the creek from this particular development. And our walking trail will connect to the city's walking trail, which, and it should be a, and it, it'll be a public access opportunity. So, people who want to, who currently live in that neighborhood, who want to access the bike, the new city bike path, will have that opportunity with our, with our, through our walking path system. I think that's a real advantage to, to the community and I think that'd be help everyone. Over time, there may be a connection from Jackson Bend to the, to the new roadway. There's two opportunities for the city to connect in there. One would be Edinburgh and the other one would be in this particular location. The city has talked to us about providing an, an access along our western border next to the creek so that it could have a spur walking path that would connect directly to Grissom with a bridge that they would build, that would be accessed by all of the community and, you know, particularly guys that were, I guess, were going to school there. And we've, we've responded to that and committed to give that to them so that in the future, as, as there's funding, that would be available to the city to do something like that. There was some question about the soils. We did a soil analysis. We have a geotechnical firm who does a full site assessment, does road evaluation for us. That's part of what we have to do before we bring a subdivision forward. It was done by a firm called OMI. That is given to the city in conjunction with our submittal and so, all of the analysis of the soils and our work is approved, that is recommended in that report, is approved by the city and is part of our submittal package. So, that has been something that's been looked at. That's an overview. I'm happy to answer specific questions.
Okay. I would, I would like to not get in a question and answer session with Mr. Enfinger if, well, I know, but in...
He raised questions that need to be answered.
He raised questions, we need to answer them.
Okay. We have, we have heard, we have heard your comments and we have a time in the agenda for us to discuss all of these issues that we're talking about. I would be happy for anyone else that wants to comment on this item to please do so, but keep in mind, there are two other items for public hearing related to this issue. So...
Just real quick. My name is Glenn Wagner, 2402 Rothmore Drive, right next to the O'Hallorans. Mr. Enfinger very generously said that he would offer an alternate route to, for the homeowners association to access the public area around the West Pond. Well, my question is, why do you need to build a house there and why provide an alternate route? Why don't you just maintain the existing route? Thank you.
Rick Robinson, 203 Rothmore. If he was involved in the initial development and we have all these water problems and he's making promises that he's going to fix them, he should have fixed them before we started it. We wouldn't be in here arguing with him. I'm not going to address the other issues.
And of course, you all still know who, where I'm from. As far as the homeowners association and him allowing us access, after a homeowners association is established there, he will no longer be able to say what's done and the homeowners association will be able to vote. They could take away that right. So, that's a mute point. If the soil survey is had, I want to know, has it been examined by the city? Because there's been a lot of flooding back there. That means a lot of silt. It was farmland for decades upon decades. So, you're telling me that to bring that soil and only use that soil to pound up and put large, comfortable homes in is going to, that dirt's going to support it? That's the question that I have for that. And, and on the zoning thing, the public walkway and assessing that, here's the thing that I can tell you that the, the Jackson Bend Homeowner Association has over the English Village ones. We don't have a walkway around our pond and we save a boatload of money on our insurance that we have to pay. If it's publicly accessible, their insurance is going to go through the roof because you're responsible on your common property for anybody who's there. And for me to have to be the way I am with people that come and want to fish in the pond, it's not the most neighborly thing, but we don't need to be taken to court because we've already spent our funding to help pitch in with the city to fix our current water problems. So, we can't afford insurance. So, I'm just saying, do the homeowners that are going to move in know that they're going to face those same issues with their homeowners insurance with a publicly accessible walkway through their neighborhood?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Cappy O'Halloran and my mother-in-law lives at 2400 Rothmore and I have a procedural, procedural issue. Mr. Enfinger said, would we have specific questions and so on? My contention is, we didn't know enough about this in advance to get any specifics. There has not been transparency and timeliness in the communication to us so that we can get our act together in a timely fashion. I would request that we delay this and let's do some studies, get more information, answer some of these questions that everyone has had so that we can all have a more informed view of what's going on.
Susan Layton from Danbury Circle again. I would also request that any action on this be delayed. I believe Mr. Enfinger and Smith Engineering, as far as the water, that he can control. What I don't believe is that the city is taking care of their part of this and they have not been out there to examine the floodway nor any of the drainage culverts that go into it. And that's the problem that needs to be fixed before we even talk about any development.
Amen.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to, I'd like to move on if we could. Is there anyone else here to speak on Item 9, the zoning plat? All right. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Item 10 is Whitesburg Estates, Jackson Bend, addition, Phase 2. Thomas?
Whitesburg Estates, Jackson Bend, addition, Phase 2 is located southeast city, west of South Memorial Parkway and north of Rothmore Drive. This item is before you for layout of 43 lots and preliminary of 43 lots.
Okay. So, this is related to the layout of the subdivision. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Danny Parker, 2400 Rothmore. Maybe everybody's got that stuff off their chest. I've got some environmental concerns with respect for existing wildlife and endangered species which are known to be local. We're concerned about silt and erosion control and possible hazardous runoff from chemicals during and after construction. We would like to see plans for... We would like to see plans for silt and erosion control. I know that's coming as the plan develops more. But also like, you know, as a community that we all love, we'd like to see like new growth trees to replace anything that's removed, preferably nut bearing trees, you know, for the animals, stuff like that. I know I sound like a tree hugger. Any temporary plans for diverting water during construction? If he's digging ponds, he's going to have to divert the water somewhere temporarily and that could cause problems. I'd like to see what the plan is to prevent construction site soil from just entering the neighborhood, you know. You know, prompt repair to streets that are damaged from heavy equipment. This, I'm going to speak on behalf of the community. We would like to have a representative of Whitesburg Estate. Be appointed to represent everyone and have access to the construction site. Just so we can see that, you know, things are being complied with as far as, you know, erosion fences, silt fences and, and be able to speak with the developer and the city about our concerns, you know, have someone appointed. And finally, as on the plan, the proposed plan, that Lot One clearly shows water being diverted off of the new property that's going to be entering the existing Rothmore Retention Pond. So as it's drawn now, it looks unacceptable to shed water into an existing pond. So that's Lot One concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Pareek, 2323 Rothmore Drive. I've never been on this rodeo before, so I'm not really sure what the difference between number nine and number 10, the items. I mean, do we have to get back and do our comments carry over from the previous to this?
Yes, ma'am, your comments will, will carry over.
Okay, because I wasn't sure the difference of what, exactly what this is compared to number 10.
This one is, we're discussing the layout of the subdivision, the layout of each lot. The previous one was related to the zoning plat where he's offered zoning restrictions.
I think we've kind of made comments on all of it before. Thank you.
Sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I would just like to say one thing. I'm Liz O'Halloran at Lot Seven on Rothmore, 2400. When you say, Mr. Enfinger, that you don't see any difference, if you guys know where Ashton Manor is in South Huntsville, anybody up there? That, those houses are close together and they're near the street. They are in no way, shape, or form like our neighborhood. And they are in no way, shape, or form like the Tamara neighborhood. And they are in no way, shape, or form like the Whitesburg Estates houses. So I just don't understand in his mind, when he talks about these are going to be very similar, I've been there, you know, I've seen them. It's hard to conceptualize unless you actually see it. So I suggest you take a drive down and take a look. They are not the same. To have a house is five foot between is not the same as our houses. To have, have a driveway that's so small, it's not the same as our houses. So I just don't, I don't understand that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Robert Wright again, 2421 Rothmore Drive. I don't know, Mr. Enfinger, if you could bring the plat back up? Yeah, I don't know the restrictions of the subdivision, but I could tell early on when we saw the plat that, just like our neighborhood, he's, he's got some constrictions because we got the sanitary sewer line going right through the property and he's trying to build these retention ponds. I, I don't know if he ever even considered to think if he wanted to do a zone two with the 1A restrictions that he wanted to apply, that he would have done two separate roads where he would have, he would have half the lots coming out of Jackson's Bend and the other half lots coming out of Sockwell. Because he could have put those, he could have put those homes adjacent to each other and had the retention ponds in the front of their yard views instead of the back. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on Whitesburg Estates, Jackson's Bend Addition Phase Two? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 11 is location, character, and extent. 11A John Hunt Park Sand Volleyball Complex Revised Plan.
Give me one second.
The sand volleyball courts at John Hunt Park are located southeast, southwest city, south of Airport Road and east of Lehman Ferry Road. I'll turn over to Jeffrey Alpha with City of Huntsville for a presentation.
Thank you, Thomas. My name is Jeffrey Alpha. I'm the architect with the City of Huntsville, General Services Department. It's the administration's desire to revitalize John Hunt Park. One of the activities they wanted to bring to the revitalization that I was surprised that the community's interested is sand volleyball. Currently, we only have three sand volleyball courts which are located in Bronze Springs. But they were, for all intents purposes, they dug a hole in the ground, poured some sand, and called it a day. Similar to the big picture, this is one of those that, you know, doing the research, we found out if we build it, they will come. The administration's desire to have, I believe, 12 courts as a phase one. And then with a future expansion as funds allow and the, as it catches on. This current triangular piece of land is located just below Kids Space, right off of Airport. It's currently just flat and undeveloped. This is a small microcosm as part of a big plan for John Hunt Park. It extends above the old Joe Davis Stadium and is far below south of the municipal golf course. It'll have a restroom, pavilion, dressing, showers. Let's see, the concession. It also has spots for food truck. And then the goal is to not just make this a place for the public, is to bring sort of the professional circuit and, and sort of bring in additional tax dollars, people staying overnight and having tournaments here. So it's not just a, it becomes sort of a potential revenue generator as also a benefit to the citizens. But again, this, one of the things we also like to do, Thomas, if you could get to the pictures. One of the things we have been trying to do over the city is bring a little bit more aesthetics to the, this is our current one we have under construction, Bronze Springs. Can you get to the before picture? If we have them. This is, well, what he's showing right here is, is sort of the, the current sort of flavor we're bringing. We're having to balance cost, durability, and aesthetics. This is what we currently have as a, as a restroom pavilion. You can see it's very Spartan. And it, what we're trying to do is in addition to provide the service and activity, add a little bit of life, but provide the durability. So once we spend the money to do this, it'll last, it won't cost a lot to maintain, but have a little bit nicer flavor than what we're used to.
Is there anyone here to comment on the John Hunt Park Sand Volleyball Complex?
Yes. I would like to ask him, has this got anything to do or touching any of that golf course? Are you taking any of that golf course? We're not through with that yet, so I, I hope you are not running in to try to change things real quick like.
No, ma'am, this, this is, although if you see that yellow line just north of the golf course, but south of the triangle, we are not encroaching on the golf course line. That's a separate project.
What about the Joe Davis Stadium?
Uh, no, ma'am, that's. We are right here. This is, this is sort of the boundary of the sand volleyball complex. You have the golf course will be a separate project. The soccer field, then we have festival area north of that and then whatever happens with Joe Davis Stadium. So.
Okay.
Again, this is a small project that extends far beyond a huge plan for redevelopment that they anticipate to be 10 to 20 years. So this is just about a step of one of many steps.
So it's just one plan tonight that you're doing? How many acres is that?
I'm sorry?
How many acres is this plan tonight?
This one, I don't have that information in front of me. It's a 14.
Okay. Okay, that's good, thank you.
Is there anyone else to comment? All right, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. The next item is 11B Air Monitoring Station at John Hunt Park.
This item is located southwest city, south of Airport Road and east of Lehman Ferry. I will turn over to Philip Cross with Croy Engineering for presentation.
Good morning, I'm Philip Cross with Croy Engineering. We also have worked, or we are also working on the sand volleyball court. This is a separate project, but it goes hand in hand with the sand volleyball project. There's a existing air monitoring station on the volleyball site. It's, there's, I don't know if you can see, there's that, there's, this is obviously an old airport and that taxiway, that's it right there. That's the existing air monitoring station. So to get, it has setback requirements of 10 meters for trees and 70 meters for vehicles and car and parking. So to be able to make room for that and also to give them a slightly newer facility, I believe they may, I'm not really sure what they're doing with the equipment inside, so I can't say they're upgrading or just moving it. But we are going to be relocating that facility from that location down to the taxiway, which is adjacent to the golf course, but not on the golf course, it's still just on the taxiway. And this is a federally, as I understand, it's a federally required air monitoring station for the city that is required to be there. And so it actually has like a 24-hour window that we can even have it moved. But like I said, this is a separate, but very well connected to the volleyball court project. And it's just going to be moving and, well, reconstructing that air monitoring station to the west and south.
Is there anyone here to comment on the air monitoring station at John Hunt Park?
I guess I may just asking, what's an air monitoring station?
Ms. Reed, would you state your name again, please?
I'm just asking, what's an air monitoring station? What is that?
Sure. The, what you see here, it's a facility that literally monitors the air. It has certain local, state, and federal requirements. It's been in there and you've probably passed by it a thousand times since you've driven down Airport and just never seen it. It's deliberately set away from 10 meters from trees, 30 meters from the road. Our concern in doing environmental study and working with natural resources is if we left it there, the amount of cars we're bringing in, which is roughly, what, 128 cars at maximum capacity? That would alter or skew the air monitoring numbers. So to make sure we're staying in compliance and we're getting true readings, we're, we're going to build another one where this is the actual drawings, but it's, if you go out there and see it, this is identical to what's out there. And locate that a little bit south and to the west of where it currently is located. And it's located in a strategic position to, to make sure it gets accurate readings.
Two more questions. How many acres is that?
It's, it's under half an acre. I mean, it's just a driveway and a.
Does the City of Huntsville own that property?
Yes, ma'am.
Since they're the developers?
Yeah.
All right, just checking up, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Clay Pareek, 2323 Rothmore. I just had a question though, because that's right there by the tennis courts, right?
Yes, sir.
Do you have, are y'all planning, because that's a, because I took my son when he's practicing driving, that turns pretty sharp. Are y'all going to try to adjust that part of the roadway? I mean, is that, I'm just.
No, as far as I'm aware of, the, the traffic patterns have been looked at and I know what you speak of, my, my son plays at the tennis center himself. As far as I'm aware of, that's been reviewed and at this time, no one has brought it to our attention. As far as I'm aware of, it's compliant with all the. Yeah, I believe they have looked at it and the, the number of cars, like I said, we've planned for a reasonable scenario, but that is part of the long range plan. As we add more activities, things will get bigger. There are already, if you go out there, you'll see Public Works and everybody already beginning to install new roads and pathways around there. So we're not going to be forcing people to do these end arounds. There's, it's quite a bit of thought going on, onto it.
Anyone else to comment on the air monitoring station? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 11C is North Huntsville Town Center Library. And I'm going to ask our vice chair, Gary Whitley, to handle this. I'll have to recuse on this.
Thank you, Liz. Thomas?
North Huntsville Town Center Library is located northwest city, south of Sparkman Drive and east of Pulaski Pike. I'll turn it over to Bart Bancowski of Fuquain Partners.
Bart Bancowski, 1110 West Moreland Huntsville. I'm a partner with Fuquain Partners. This is the renovation of 3011 Sparkman Drive. In its previous life, it was Baraka Baptist Church, Baraka Academy, Naval Training Station, most recently the Fire and Rescue and Police Training Facility. This is a model of the, of the existing facility. Sits on roughly 30 acres, currently parks around 140 cars. And what the city plans to do is renovate this facility, upgrade it to a 20,000 square foot library facility that will be the first phase of what has been coined the North Huntsville Town Center. The town center is a concept which the City of Huntsville is excited to provide with the different areas of town. And this will, again, will be the crown jewel of this, this campus. The existing Bessie K. Russell facility, which is probably around 40 years old and I believe originally was a temporary building, currently sits on that side and it is 1,800 square feet. So we are increasing the size of this facility by, you know, a large amount. There is a gymnasium in the back. City of Huntsville Parks and Recreation currently runs that facility. Part of the upgrade of this project will be the parking, grading, and drainage for the facility. We're actually, actually reducing hardscape surface. There is a walking trail in back and a newly, well, a soccer field in back. And again, this will be quite an asset to the community in North Huntsville.
Is there anyone here to speak to this item, 11C North Huntsville Town Center Library? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
All right, thank you. Item 12 on our agenda is zoning. 12A is Beetle Lane Rezoning, that one has been withdrawn. So we'll move to item 12B Sockwell Rezoning. Ashley?
This proposed rezoning request is approximately 24.35 acres. This property is located on the west side of Sockwell Drive and south of the. This property is located on the west side of Sockwell Drive and south of the future Hazlen extension. This property is currently zoned Residence One A, which is the original zoning designation for this particular area. The petitioner would like to rezone this property from R-one A to Residence Two A. The property owner has also requested three plat restrictions, a minimum lot area of twelve thousand square feet, which is consistent with the adjacent R-one A zoning designation, a minimum lot width that is also consistent with the adjacent residential zoning, and also single-family detached dwellings only, as the Residence Two District accommodates single-family detached as well as attached, and also some two-family dwellings. On the screen, I have created a comparison chart that shows the density control differences between Residence One A and Residence Two. The areas that are highlighted in orange are all of the applicable zoning density controls that would apply if this property is rezoned to Residence Two. As you can see, the minimum lot width, as well as the minimum lot area, would remain for Residence One A, and the other Residence Two District regulations, such as front yard, side yard, rear, and maximum building area would be applicable.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Sockwell zoning?
Danny Parker.
This was the, you know, there's three items related to this one, one, you have an opportunity again. I'd appreciate it if you wouldn't say the same things again, but if you have fresh comments, we'd like to hear them.
Also, Chairman, I would like to address a couple concerns I heard during the subdivision that weren't related to the subdivision request. They were more so zoning matters. As far as public hearing notifications are concerned, public hearing notifications go out to all residents that are within a five-hundred-foot radius of the proposed rezoning property. So if you were six-hundred feet away, one-thousand feet away, you would have not received a notification for the property that's outlined in red. Those notifications went out on June twelfth, as well as this particular public hearing, and all of our public hearings were published in Sunday's paper.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Clay Pree, twenty-three, twenty-three, Rothmore. So I have a question to the zoning. The plat restrictions that are applied and when they initially built, how easily can they be changed or amended, or if somebody purchases that property, can they add?
The plat restrictions run with the land. In order for those plat restrictions to be lifted, the original owner would have to come back through Planning Commission and have those lifted, and those plat restrictions are recorded in the Madison County Courthouse. So prior to this zoning change, if the zoning is recommended and is adopted by council in the future, they would be required to have those plat restrictions recorded before this becomes legally effective.
Right, so is it, so if you change them to go to the original, which is Zone Two restrictions, which would shrink everything, would that be acceptable? Is it usually done quickly, is my question? Because to me, if it's, if it's Zone Two, and I'm under One A restrictions, and I come in and say, hey, I want to change it to Zone Two restrictions, change, that's normally would be accepted, right? I'm just getting to the precedence here that's being set by rezoning to Two.
Only the original party that will set forth these plat restrictions are able to lift those. So unless Mr. Enfinger comes back and lifts those in the future, that's the only way that those can be lifted. He would come back through this Planning Commission body, and there would be a section on the agenda for vacating plat restrictions.
So just as a hypothetical, he hit some of the same issues that John Gann had developing our land. He could say, oh, I want to change my plan and come back and actually request that.
Hypothetically, he could, but he would be required to do the subdivision process, so we would start this whole cycle all over again. So he wouldn't be able to come in, lift the plat restrictions, and then roll out a new product without coming back through subdivision, subcommittee, and also Planning Commission approval.
Because just my general observation, and, and nothing about the engineering company, but they did Tamra, and they, and they did, they did Jackson's Bend, and there were issues in both of them.
As he sells the lots, the new property owners also have to consent to changing those plat restrictions and the mortgage holder of that property. So as more lots are sold, it becomes more and more difficult to change those regulations. Yes, ma'am.
Susan Hawkins, two-one-oh-one, Robinwood Drive. I've had the unfortunate experience to go through this before in Orlando, and what you were saying is not quite true. Once the zoning changes from One A and goes to Two A or Two, it becomes much easier to change the zoning to include more families on the land. You're talking about the developer and the owner, both of who have a financial stake in this. They're not on our side. So, um, that's another concern, that unfortunately, we have lost a lot of our people because this is running so late. But we need to address that. I request again that you postpone this vote until we have had further discussions with Whitesburg Estates and the Planning Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carmen Covey. I live at twenty-three, twenty-four, Rothmore. I have an issue. I, when I received the rezoning letter, it showed me a black outlined portion that said they wanted to rezone, and it's about half of the field, because what the letter didn't mention was that the other property was county property that was going to be annexed at whatever zone this property ended up at. So it seemed like it was a deliberately misleading letter, because how many people know that a field behind you, half of it's county and half of it's city?
Chairman, I can, I can address her concerns, as well as I can pull up the rezoning notification that was mailed out on the twelfth. And also, I want to give a little background on the recent annexation of the adjacent property. That particular property was petitioned for annexation in March of two thousand seventeen. That property was adopted by council on April thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, and that property became effective April twenty-third of this year. The zoning for that property began in March, excuse me, in May of two thousand seventeen, as well as this rezoning request. The difference in the time schedule is why one portion was seen last month, and the rezoning portion is seen this month. With rezonings, we're required to send out public hearing notifications. That is a state requirement. For zonings, those can go to Subcommittee and Planning Commission the same month. So Planning Commission took action on the previous property last month, so that's why you're seeing this a month later. So that's why the particular notification that you received, which is on the screen, only addresses the rezoning. It does not address the zoning item. Last month, when the western property was approved, or excuse me, recommended by Planning Commission, this public hearing was set, and any questions regarding this item, we're more than welcome to address today, but there was no secrecy or transparency. It was just a difference in schedule, because one is a newly annexed property being zoned, one is a property that is being rezoned, which has always been in the city limits. I think, I'm not sure how, uh.
So, so is that, is the property that was recently annexed, is it already zoned?
It is in transition now. It was recommended by Planning Commission last month. It was, the public hearing was set last week, or excuse me, two weeks ago, on the June, June eighth meeting by City Council, and City Council will hold a public hearing on July twenty-seventh. That property has the same rezoning, excuse me, has the same zoning designation of R-two, which Mr. Enfinger is requesting this property be rezoned to, as well as it has the exact same plat restriction, so.
How can it have a zoning designation if it's not zoned yet?
It's a recommendation. So it will have the exact same R-two zoning.
So if that property is behind my home, will I get a notification on that property?
Not for zonings. It was newly annexed property. Their, property in the county has no zoning designation.
So you can feel, so you can understand why the homeowners feel like they've been deceived and misled?
Now, had they been on the same schedule, that would make it a little bit more clear. The middle of the rezoning application came a month following the annexation application. So it's really just a lapse in the schedule. Had this rezoning application come in in April, you would have seen both items on the same schedule, but there's, there will be no difference in the zoning if this particular item is recommended.
So, so if you, if you disapprove the rezoning request from One A to Two, will that impact at all the zoning request for the other part of the property?
Well, that portion has already been recommended by Planning Commission, so they won't see that, they won't see that recommendation anymore for the zoning unless there is any future change. The developer can come back in with a new product if he wishes, if, if this item is not recommended, and it retains its existing zoning, and the other property has a different zoning designation, he's more than welcome to come in with a different layout for the property. That would be up, up to his discretion.
So make sure we understand that property has already been zoned?
It is not, it has not officially been zoned. It's been.
Why was it recommended to Zone Two, though? Why did the commission decide that? What was the reason?
The, 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 the.
Um, it is public record, and that is what was requested by the petitioner, Residence Two District, with the same applicable plat restrictions you'll see on the screen. Yes, because they are two separate properties that comprise your property. Okay.
But, but City Council, when, when things leave the Planning Commission, we recommend to the City Council. The City Council has to review, they'll have a public hearing, and they will, they will, they will be the final say. Yes, on.
Yes, and that will take place on July twenty-seventh. That is the public hearing. They will vote. If that item is approved, it will become effective no later than ten days following that, that particular. Yes, ma'am, you do. They have a public hearing. It's typically Item Six A, and you're more than welcome to come on the twenty-seventh and address any concerns that you may have. And I'll do the same spiel again without the Sockwell confusion.
Could I ask another question pertinent to that? Relative to that, would we have, I'm sorry.
Could you?
Capio Halloran, twenty-four hundred, Rothmore. Can I ask a question? You, you spoke about, we, we've been asking what the criteria were that were brought forth in this request, and it almost sounds like someone is saying, I request Zone Two. Okay, you can have it. Is there, is there a criteria list or something that we could look at before the public meeting? This is what I was talking about with the transparency question, so we know what the issues are, so we can come prepared.
I, I believe the adjacent, we, we try not to, what we call spot zone, Ashley jump in here if I'm miss, miss speaking. We try not to spot zone, and that, and what that means is have an outlying piece of property that is different from the adjacent zonings. And if you look at the map she just had on there, there are several adjacent properties that are R-two that these properties touch. Now, I realize there's also the adjacent property that is R-one. You can see.
Yeah, there, um, the closest R-two designation, you have the property to the rear, which is now the, on the new Grissom High School property. It is split zoned between Highway Business C-four and also Residence Two A. This is the original zoning designation of this area. You also have some Residence Two A that is located immediately east of this neighborhood, as well as Light Industry. The majority of this area is the original zoning designations of this property, and not a whole lot has changed. We're starting to see a few pockets here and there, but there are other multifamily zoning designations that abut this property. Primarily, the developer is requesting the Residence Two be, he would like the smaller setbacks, which is why he kept the larger lot area and the larger lot width. Essentially, he wants to build more house on the same-sized lot.
Yes, sir.
Danny Parker, twenty-four hundred, Rothmore. In the center there is the Sockwell in light green, which is currently One A. It is in the city limits of Huntsville. To the left in the darker color is the Jackson Bend that the plan is to annex. The consensus of the Whitesburg Estate community is to have the Sockwell portion remain One A, and then the addition also become One A as it's annexed in. That's the consensus of the community of Whitesburg.
Yes, sir.
Merv Langland, twenty-four, twenty-one, Rothmore. I want to thank the young lady for the explanation for the, for how the notices were sent out. But again, as reiterated before, I think there was a lot of unknown and, and probably lack of communication of how this process works, that it's caught the neighborhood off guard. I think it's convenient that, on the picture that you had up before, that the existing Two A zoning was north of a, the blue line ditch. So there is a natural separation today that exists between what is zoned One A and what is zoned Two A, or R-two A for the school. And I think that was ignored when that recommendation went forward. And again, I reiterate, I think most of the comments that we made before from the community was that we want that developed as One A. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Eric Post. I live at twenty-four, twenty-four, Rothmore. Ashley, if you could bring up your zoning chart again, please?
Yes.
I'm trying to bring up some little logic here. The developer's asking for Two with One A setbacks. Does the zoning commission allow for a little flipside to this, to approve One A with Two setbacks? Where the, the intent of the developer is to leave everything single-family detached, but there's too much leeway or risk on our parts for him to get his multifamily at a Two at some point later, as opposed to leaving it One A and giving him the other setbacks? So it sounds like your, your, the planning commission, zoning commission is allowing to, to do Two A with One A requirements. Why don't you give him One A with Two requirements and leave it at One A? So, so everything's One A?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't know the procedure on that, but that suits me fine. It don't make any difference to me. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be tricky. I don't think that there's any difference between the two. Apparently, you do think. But if, but if it makes you, if, if there's a procedure, if there's a procedure for that, that works fine for me.
So the weight? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Enfinger has the floor. I appreciate.
All I'm looking for is, I, I don't want anything different than what I've told y'all. I'm looking for a little help in the front yard, a little help in the side yard. But the, but with the restrictions that we have with the zoning plat, y'all are completely protected. Y'all don't believe that, and so we're working with a belief system.
Excuse me, excuse me. We, we will, we will deliberate and have a discussion at the appropriate time. Does anyone have any further comments on this item?
Chairman, I also want to clarify something that I heard this gentleman state. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. I want to be clear about what Residence One A allows versus Residence Two. Residence Two does not allow apartments or your traditional multifamily that people consider. It allows single-family attached, single-family detached, two-family dwellings. You can also have zero-lot lines and a few other smaller, single-family detached products. So apartments would not be permitted here. Also, with the plat restriction, which states that the property will be single-family detached dwellings only, he, he will be bound to those plat restrictions. So he can't come in and just slap uptown homes, or put up zero-lot line homes, or anything else. He would have to abide by the restrictions that are set forth on that plat, or he will have to. or he will have to come back through this body and start this whole cycle all over again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on the Sockwell zoning, rezoning?
Yes, I, I might have misunderstood something when somebody said that these things are put on the council, there's a public hearing about them. That I've never known them to bring a zoning or a planning thing to a public hearing at a council meeting.
Ms. Reed, you, every single zoning and rezoning in the city of Huntsville goes to the City Council.
Ms. Reed, you jump on me every week, I know you see those, uh, public hearing notifications.
I'm there all the time, trust me. I take you all on everywhere, but anyway.
We're ready.
And the setbacks, setbacks is the backyards, the front yards and the side yards. And you all need to quit that in this city because it hurts their neighbors. When you do that, you're causing problems with the next neighbor going on. So you just need to forget that and drop it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on the Sockwell rezoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 12B is Freeman rezoning.
This rezoning request is approximately 1.31 acres. This property is currently zoned Heavy Industry. This property is located on the east side of, uh, First Street and south of Freeman Road. It is also located north of Roland Road. Uh, this property is currently comprised of vacant lots as well as there are two single-family detached homes. The property owner would like to request that this property be rezoned from Heavy Industry to Village Business C6 District. They would like to construct a 10-unit, um, multifamily dwelling on this particular property and C6 does accommodate multifamily dwellings.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Freeman rezoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 12C is Governor's West zoning.
This, this property is newly annexed, uh, this zoning is newly annexed property. This property is located north of Governor's West and north of Interstate 565. Uh, this property is approximately 2.63 acres. The rezoning, the, excuse me, the zoning request for this property is Commercial Industrial Park, which is consistent with other properties located on Governor's West.
Is there anyone here to comment on, uh, Governor's West zoning? Yes, sir.
My name's Mike Ennis, I live at 1106 Governor's Drive. And I'm at the other end of this, but the reason I'm here is because I have some TV reporters in my yard and they were saying they were going to widen Governor's Drive and take like 14 feet of my front yard. And so I'm probably in the wrong meeting for this. I would like to get some direction, should I go to the City Council meeting?
Sir, if you can get with me after the meeting, or I can meet with you outside real quick and give you some contact info for that project.
Okay, I, I met with, uh, Alan Clements and I got a drawing from him. And then I met with another engineering firm, it's independent, hired by the city, I can't remember the names. And it was different. And so this will be the third time that they've taken part in my front yard. And the last two times, I got certified mail that had a drawing and had invited me to the meeting. This time, I got a TV crew in the front yard. And so I just like to see what's going on.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else to speak on Governor's West zoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 12D is Simmons zoning.
This zoning item is also newly annexed property, it's approximately 96.20 acres. This property is located on the west side of Old Bit Cove Road and north of Paul Drive. This property is, uh, currently vacant land, there was previously a single-family detached home here. This property, uh, has a zoning, a proposed zoning designation of Residence 2. This property has no plat restrictions, um, that will be applied. Uh, the intended use for this property is a proposed single-family detached subdivision.
Is there anyone here to comment on Simmons zoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 12E is Newcastle zoning.
This zoning item is also newly annexed property, it's a, a total of 2.06 acres. This property is located, uh, south of Railway Lane and south of Hobbs Island. The proposed zoning request for this property is Residence 2A, which is consistent with the adjacent Butler Basin subdivision and consistent with the adjacent proposed Riverside at Butler Basin subdivision.
Is there anyone here to comment on Newcastle's zoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Okay, that completes the public hearing portion of our agenda. I would like to suggest we take a five-minute recess, we've been sitting for 2 hours and 15 minutes.
Can I ask a question? You said that, uh, you would deliberate and provide answers to our questions. How do we get the answers to the questions?
We have two additional portions of our agenda. Uh, one is the subdivision, which we will, uh, hear, uh, hear each item and, and vote on it. Uh, the other one is the zoning portion. So we'll have, we'll have opportunity to discuss it amongst the commission members at that time. Let's take a five-minute recess. That's fine. Okay, let, let's call this meeting back to order after our recess. The next item on our agenda is a subdivision committee report. Uh, I'd like to call on Kyle Collins, the Chair of the Subdivision Committee, to provide that report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subdivision committee, uh, met on June 21st, 2017 and the following are our recommendations. Item number 1, Brownstones at Twickenham, a re-subdivision of Quigley Map, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on 2 lots with a waiver on the utility and drainage easements around both lot parameters.
Move to approve?
Any discussion?
Yes, oh, never mind, he has the plan up, that's okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this is also a final approval on 2 lots.
Uh, Jim, is it in order for a final?
Yes, sir, it's in order.
Is there a motion?
So moved?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 2, the Mint Townhouses, re-subdivision of lots 9 and 10 and part of 11, Block 51 of East Huntsville, addition, presented for final approval of 4 lots.
Jim, is it in order for a final?
Yes, sir, this subdivision received final plat approval September 2016. They never recorded it within the six-month period, which makes this refinal necessary.
Is there a motion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 3, Freeman Square, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval, 1 lot with a waiver on a 10-foot utility and drainage easement along First Street and a reduction of a utility and drainage easement to 7 and 1/2 feet along Roland Road.
Your motion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 4, Friendship Commons, re-subdivision of lots 1 and 2 of Friends subdivision. The committee recommends layout approval on 11 lots.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll start with the discussion, Thomas. Are the lots, okay, so is there a new road being created, is that what I'm looking at?
That would actually be a common area and it would be internal drives maintained by the association established by all of these lot owners. So these are not private drives and/or public streets. This is an internal drive which will therefore be associated in a common area.
So are there rear yards facing Winchester or?
Um, the frontage is along Winchester. The frontage for these 11, uh, these 10 lots is along Winchester and the frontage for this lot is along Homer Nance. This is an internal drive as if to say like, uh, for instance with the former Madison Square Mall, where that there was an internal drive loop around. This would be the same effect, where it's not a public street, but an internal loop or internal network to move traffic through and from.
This is commercial, thank you.
This is a commercial. It's on C4, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll need to recuse myself.
There was a discussion about a cemetery, uh-
Yes, it's center here and then there, in the, um, the homeowners to the south that is located within the county, there is a cemetery that is located between several homes. If you could bear with me a moment, I'll go to that particular area. This is Friendship Commons, alright. In my former time with the city of Huntsville, I located all of these cemeteries for the city of Huntsville. This loc, this is one cemetery located in the, uh, which is in the county, um, between these two homes, which is not city property and is in, located in the county. And there is one that is essentially associated in this tree bluff here. And it's, uh, these are former Friends, um, heirs, um, that exist. And, um, this was, um, let me go back to the plat. And that's why they've established this additional common area in between to protect that particular cemetery here. This will be where the cemetery is located via the plat. So therefore-
Access to that will be maintained.
Access to that will be maintained within the common area maintenance agreement.
How do you get to that cemetery now?
Currently, through the, uh, through the property, let me go back to Google Earth. And there is a, pretty much a driveway that comes off of, um, Winchester Road and access.
Okay, now, earlier there was a resident that said something about a cemetery and I was unaware that there were 2, so I'm not sure which one-
Those residents have, um, have gone, but they are, they are referring to the one internally in their neighborhood. This one here.
Which is so-
Which is not a part of this particular subdivision.
Okay, got it.
Any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 5 has been removed, we'll go to item number 6, Aridale subdivision Phase 1. Staff recommends approval of a waiver of a 4-foot sidewalk along the north side of Aridale Main to provide a 6-foot sidewalk on the south side of Aridale Main.
Um, just to give you a little bit of history, when, um, Aridale subdivision was developed, there was to be sidewalks installed to and from Aridale subdivision along this, uh, Aridale Main Street. The sidewalks were not installed at the time, um, considering that when Nance Road was, uh, updated, there were sidewalks installed on the eastern side of the street. We're requesting that a sidewalk will be installed or waive the sidewalk on the northern side and install a sidewalk on the south side to make sure there's connectivity to and from this subdivision to the south, which will, uh, lead to Academy and other commercial areas to the south.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 7, McMullen Cove, Silo Hill Phase 3, presented for final approval on 16 lots.
Jim, is it in order for a final?
Yes, sir, it's in order with improvements in sidewalks to be installed June 23rd, 2018.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 8, McMullen Place, Phase 6, committee recommends relayout and preliminary approval on 9 lots.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, I also need to recuse on this one.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 9, Providence Phase 10, the committee recommends relayout and re-preliminary approval on 49 lots.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10, Trailhead Huntsville, re-subdivision of tracks 4 and 5 of Chase Creek Park. The committee recommends preliminary 73 lots with a waiver of sidewalks on one side of Moores Mill Road.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Thomas, if you'll show the aerial image. Am I correct that there are stub roads on Barkwood Drive?
You would be correct.
And Bridgestone Drive?
Correct.
As well as Shadowbrook and Valleystone?
Um, Valleystone, I am not-
Valleystone to the-
One, two, Shadowbrook, these 3, these are the 3 stubs.
Go over to the right, and Valleystone's at the very-
This is a cul-de-sac, this one here?
No, Valleystone is, so this should be the street there.
Here? This is not a part, this is not a, it's a cul-de-sac. And there are 3 stub streets to and from.
Are they clearly marked currently?
Yes, they are with 3, 3 red diamonds designated OM 4-4.
Thank you.
And also, just to be clear, there's going to be a road built and extended to the west here from that intersection down to feed this new subdivision, which leads directly to the red light on 72 East. So that's going to be the quickest, easiest and fastest way to get back to the intersection to get over the mountain to get to work. And that will be the feeder for this, this part of this development. This development will work to the east, uh, but right now, it's not, it's not there.
Just to be clear, Jim, you said it's going to work to the east?
Yes, sir, if you pull the layout back up of this, this development, you'll see, you'll see, go back to that first one, Thomas. You'll see, uh, at the top of the screen, that cross that I was talking about, right there. As the new cul-de-sac comes down, you'll see the development. It's not going to be to the east where those houses are, as you can see, track 4 is still a field. And until it works its way east, those houses will not have any, any connection.
Got it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 11, Twin Creek subdivision, the committee recommends layout approval on 201 lots.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 12, Viduta Village subdivision, presented for final approval on 21 lots.
Jim, is it in order for a final?
Yes, sir, it's in order with improvements to be installed June 27th, 2018.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 13, Village of Providence Phase 6B, a re-subdivision of lot 4A of the Village of Providence 6A, presented for final approval on 8 lots.
Jim, is it in order for a final?
Yes, sir, with improvements to be installed June 27th, 2018.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 14, The Waters, the committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on 76 lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots 28, 29, 29, 30, 30 and the common area B.
Move to approve?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 15, Whitesburg Estates, Jackson's Bend, addition Phase 2, a zoning plat. The committee has recommended layout approval on 1 lot.
I make a motion to delay this vote.
I would second that motion.
I have a procedural question, give me a second. Okay, we have a motion to postpone this item to a later date. And we have a sec, yes.
This is kind of confusing the way it's written out. This is the zoning, right?
This is the zoning plat, yes. Not the zoning, not the rezoning, but the zoning- Not the zoning, not the rezoning, but the zoning plat in which he identifies the zoning restrictions.
Chairman, just to be uh, I'm sorry. This, this is a subdivision in a sense that it's a restriction on property. It's not the zoning of the property. To create these restrictions uh, that Mister Enfinger is asking for, we write a zoning plat. Which is recorded at the, at the courthouse to make these rules official. And these, in this case, it's the lot size, width and single-family detached only. So that's what this plat's for and the only purpose for this plat.
I'd just like to uh, have a little clarification on what this item actually is. This is a zoning plat. Um, which would set the plat restrictions for the property that we've, we've talked about. Be aware that this uh, zoning plat will have no effect whatsoever if the product, if the property is not rezoned. Which would, which we would do at a later time or which would come up at a later time.
Yes, sir. That's correct. And also, earlier we asked about having the property R one A and using R two regs. In terms of setbacks, which we were talking about, it would be an easier change, which y'all suggested. The issue with that is you can't use a less restrictive setback when you have an applied zoning. So every house would have to go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, which you may or may not be familiar with, which requires variances. So that's not as simple of a solution as it may seem. Uh, just wanted to be clear when y'all discussed that earlier.
So we have a, a motion to postpone. Um, Mister Watkins, would you like to um, rescind your motion to postpone, given that this issue has, this item has no effect on, other than, uh, unless the property is rezoned?
No.
Okay. Okay, uh, we'll call for a vote. Um, we have a motion to postpone. Do, do we need to set a time limit on how, how long to postpone this?
Just, just the next meeting.
Yeah, the much, my, the delay is to give them opportunity to discuss everything that involves this property. Make sure everything's on the table. There's no more confusion about transparency. Everything's on the table and it's cleared up. That way, we don't have any issues at a later date on this. And I don't have enough information like they did. I listened to all their issues and so forth. And I'd like to get more information on the entire problem to make sure it's good. Although I do understand that here, we are not talking about roads. Uh, or we're not talking about drainage. Those things are not a part of this. But I do wanna make sure that we have enough information to clear up whether there's uh, the possibility of doing something different with the setbacks. Like he cleared up an issue there with that. Uh, just making sure that those things are taken care of and that the best possible solution for everybody can be taken care of.
Just, just to be clear, uh, would you, could, could we add to your uh, to your motion that we'll postpone until the next planning commission meeting?
Yes.
That will be July twenty-fifth.
Okay.
I'd also like to add, just for the record at this point, that all of the rules in terms of subdivision regulation, airing regu- engineering regulations. Stormwater management regulations have been met by the city's standards. The engineer that produced these plans is not partial to the city. He is a private engineer with a stamp that requires his signature by the state of Alabama. He's also not, he's paid by Jeff Enfinger. But he's also a private individual who has his own credibility to manage. Just wanted to put that on record. Cause that was discussed earlier as to an impartial engineer review or a third-party review. Uh, Mister Smith is a third-party.
Any further discussion?
Hey, Mister Smith, have all requirements, has he met all the requirements? Everything's been met. Okay, is that true, Jim?
That is correct. We have signatures from every city department.
Well, I've been here a long time and I've always heard that when people come to us, that we can be sued. I mean, so if we postpone it, it's not gonna change anything. Except unless the group agrees that, for him to do this, because he's met all the agreements. And every time it's happened, it always turns out that he's met all the agreements, so he, he gets to do it. And I've been here twenty-five years or more. And we've, we've postponed things over and over and over and it always ends up the same way. And I have, I have feelings for the audience because I know exactly what they're talking about. Cause we moved in a brand-new subdivision, built two houses there, lived in one, then moved to the other. And then here they come and build patio homes uh, all the way down the street. We had to put up with all the dirt, all the trucks and everything. And of course, I called up here, even though I had been on this committee forever, and no, we can't do a thing, you know? And so it turned out that I understand. I mean, that's progress.
While I agree with you and I understand that it's likely that Mister Enfinger will get what he's uh, looking for at a later date, possibly. Uh, but I think that the concerns of the citizens to have the opportunity to express that. Uh, get as many answers from the city and get as many answers from Mister Enfinger as they possibly can to clear that up. Is more important than us rushing down the road to do this. It's only gonna be thirty days. I hope that it doesn't cause you much uh, many problems. But uh, it is good for the city of Huntsville to have the citizens' ability to speak and hear their voice, voices heard. No, it's not predetermined. The uh, he's met the criteria. Uh, and there's, there's no question about that. He's met the criteria. Uh, my reason for the delay is to give the citizens an opportunity to get every possible configuration or info questions that you have. Out of the way, uh, to make sure that we've covered every basis he's uh, wanna make sure that everything's covered. That's, that's, it's not predetermined, but I do wanna make sure you have the opportunity to, to get what you need on the table.
While we're working on figuring out stuff back here, the question that I was gonna ask and what I was going to um, ask to come address Mister Smith. And if the city engineer would both come up, there were an awful lot of concerns about drainage and water and all of that. And we heard Mister Enfinger address those, but I would like the, don't take this wrong, Mister Enfinger, the professionals in the room. To come up and address the specific concerns. I know Mister Enfinger said, we'll take care of it. It's taken care of. I'd like to hear that straight from the city engineering department. As well as the private engineering department.
I'm Dave Scroggins, with City Engineering Department. Uh, yeah, so during the course of the review of the plans. You know, part of Mister Smith's obligation is to provide hydraulic calculations to show us what happens. You know, what happens as a, as an after-effect of development. Um, so he, he provided those calculations. We reviewed and approved those calculations. As Mister McGuffey said, we signed the plans. So we wouldn't have signed them if we didn't feel confident that, that all the requirements had been met.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, I'm Billy Smith, President of Smith Engineering. Have been business in City Huntsville since nineteen seventy-two. Used to work for the city of Huntsville about three years. Uh, done numerous subdivisions, developments, street projects, drainage projects. All over the city of Huntsville and Madison County, North Alabama. Um, I, my office is located very, very close to this land. I am extremely familiar with this property from a long time period. Uh, I was the original engineer on Whitesburg Estates. It's, uh, joins this property at that time. Um, I'm, I'm extremely familiar with the flooding conditions in that area. Nineteen seventy-three, I believe, is the worst flood that we've had in that area. I was, I was here in seventy-three. Remember it very, very well. Uh, the, the flooding issues in this, in that area is more subject. Is subject to the Tennessee River more than it is individual drainage pipes. Or, or drainage systems. Basically, uh, the, the elevation of that area, the flooding elevation by FEMA. Is uh, five seventy-five. Um, that elevation has occurred in, close to that elevation in nineteen seventy-three flood. Uh, there's been several other large floods that goes back elevations to uh, seven uh, the uh, fifty-three. And uh, there's, they were occurred back in the sixties, sixty. And there is records of all this information. Uh, back to the days of TVA. I'm talking about the nineteen thirties, forties. I've seen this information. Um, and very familiar with what it ha- have. We've also worked on the flood studies, the FEMA flood studies at various times in this area. And um, I think, I think the flooding is not as a result of the individual subdivision development. That is not going to happen. It's more, it's going to happen, if there is a flood, it's going to be because of the Tennessee River. And the backing up of water there. Uh, as Mister Scoggin says, we've followed all the city regulations, requirements. Uh, there is detention, these, these two ponds, and there is two ponds. They're slightly different elevations. Uh, they are, they're serving as the retention ponds. And I think the ponds are an asset, in my opinion, to, to the prevention of further drainage problems. On the adjoining property. I would be more than happy if there are detailed problems that these people have. I would more than happy to take a look at them, discuss them with them. And uh, some of the things that were mis- mentioned, the culvert, that's the problem. I'd be more than happy to take a look at those, those particular scenarios.
Mister Smith, if you could just clarify one thing for me in your professional opinion. So these retention ponds that are coming in, that are proposed, will probably help the issue? Because when the Tennessee River backs up, it's gonna hold them, hold them more? Tell them to me in layman's terms, please.
Well, the, the, if, if we get a, if we get a, first of all, if we get a five, five seventy-three flood scen- scenario. The, the, the pond will not even be there because it's going to flow over the dikes. It's gonna be solid water in there. The good news is that tho- these houses are going to be built. At a, at a minimum elevation, uh, five seventy-six. The houses are gonna be above that flood. Uh, and we have never had anything close to that five seventy-six in the history, historical data that I've examined. Since the nineteen thirties, nineteen thirty-five. Uh, the, the ponds are just not, they're, they're an asset, in my opinion, for drainage. Rather than a, a reliable of drainage.
Does, does anybody have any other questions for Mister Smith? Uh, I'm, I'm not gonna recognize you. Um, the um, I, I would just like to point out, the, the motion on the table is to postpone um, this item. Uh, until the next planning commission meeting. We are obligated by um, state law to act on uh, any item that comes before this body within thirty days. The next planning commission meeting, um, what?
July twenty-fifth?
July twenty-fifth uh, will be within twenty-eight days. So we will still be within our timeframe to act on this if we postpone to the next meeting. Having said that, um, I have a little bit of a concern of, of setting, uh, no, not really even setting a precedent. But when a, when a, uh, an item has met all of the ru- rules and regulations of our, of our city. Um, it's, it, uh, I realize this is a special circumstance. We've had a lot of comment and discussion from the community, which is important. Um, I, I'd just be concerned about setting a precedent going forward and, and how that works from, from here on out. In this case, we are, we are fortunate that we have uh, only twenty-eight days till our next, next meeting.
Uh, may I ask just a question? The, all the requirements that we're talking about, okay? Deal with getting this particular plat ready to be rezoned? Is that, is that the requirement we're talking about? Cause we got drainage talking, we've got retention pond talking, we got traffic talking. The requirements that Mister Enfinger is supposed to meet is for this particular item number fifteen, correct?
For the, the next item, item sixteen. Is that correct? This, this one is just for the zoning plat, which will set the, the plat restrictions.
Strictly for this subdivision, Mister Collins? Yes, sir.
Right.
This subdivision only, the Mister-
But when we are voting for the zoning, which is later, correct? There, there are no requ-
See, that's why it's so confused in the way it's written up. We're not used to it being written up this way.
Well, let me add, that's what I'm trying to get clarif- clarification. What I understand is item number fifteen is a plat, a zoning plat. Which is being submitted to us for approval. And then we will later vote on the zoning being changed or not. Is this correct?
For, yeah, for a portion of the land.
The zoning plat put, sets the restrictions.
Zoning.
To R one A re- uh, lot size and lot whiffs.
And, and unless the property's rezoned, the zoning plat-
Still stays in place.
Understand, understand.
Right.
But the requirements being met for the plat, there are no requirements for zoning other than making a proper application.
Correct.
Can be, it can be-
For the zoning plat.
Or, or, okay, that's what I need to know.
Any further discussion? Okay, the motion on the table is to postpone uh, acting on this item until the July twenty-fifth planning commission meeting.
I, I have a question. What, so what does that do to item number sixteen?
I, I would think that you would want to follow suit with the other two, but we'll have to see how the, this body feels about it. Okay, so the motion on the table is to postpone this uh, item, uh, postpone action on this item for uh, until the next planning commission meeting. Which is July the twenty-fifth. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Nay. Alright, do I need a roll, I need a roll call on this? Um, we'll start down here.
Nay.
Nay. So we have four ayes and three nays.
Actually, you have the opposite. You have three ayes and four nays.
Four ayes and three nays. Okay, so the, the ayes have it. Uh, is, is there an alternative motion?
Okay, so the, the ayes have it. Is, is there an alternative motion?
Let's approve. Number fifteen.
Second.
I had four ayes and three nays. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I had, I had, I had four nays and three ayes.
Yes.
Motion failed.
So we made a motion to approve it, right?
Yes, I just made a?
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say.
John has something to say.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, I'd like a roll call as well.
Aye.
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 Okay, so the, the ayes have it, four to three. Motion carries.
The zoning plat has now been approved. The restriction set on the property to R-one-A has been approved. Lot sizes are seventy-five feet, single-family detached, twelve thousand square foot lots. That's strictly on the property. So it sets a restriction to R-one-A, which all of your neighbors are R-one, R-one-A. Everyone in this room that is in, in favor is R-one-A. Those restrictions are in place.
Mr. Chairman, this is also a final approval for one lot.
Jim is in order for a final?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number sixteen, Whitesburg Estates, Jackson Bend addition phase two. The committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on forty-three lots.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Yeah, all right, any discussion? Any discussion?
Right.
Yes.
Right. I guess my only, my question is, this is where I was going to ask the engineers to come up, because this is a more appropriate time to ask them to come up to state their case a little bit more and to, to make it a little bit more clear for us. And I was just using that because we had a big time, or time lapse there. Is there anything else you want to add from city engineering on this?
My concern is lot number one.
I'm sorry, sir, you don't now have the floor.
And would you specifically address the issues that were brought up on lot number one, about the difference in height and the concern on lot, was it one, lot seven? I'm sorry.
It was lot one.
Lot seven, okay. Lot one of the proposed subdivision. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
If I remember back, because there were several things that were stated that I tried to take notes on, specifically with lot one, when I, when I went and looked at the plans, there's no grading, you know, we don't allow grading onto an adjacent property owner. So Mr. Infinger, in this, in this construction, will not be allowed to fill over onto their lot and raise, you know, raise their ground up to create a, a different problem. And I'm sorry, I'm not the engineer for this subdivision, he's on vacation. So I, I kind of took a real good look at the plans from here in the first part of the meeting. But as far as, as far as the grading goes and the drainage issues, I, I don't believe that's going to be made worse with the filling of the lot behind them. That's certainly something we will look at during construction and even after construction.
That was another question I had for you. One of the, one of the concerns from some of the residents was to have an oversight of the construction. Could you please explain to the crowd what the engineering department does as far as subdivision oversight in the construction process?
So as the subdivision is constructed and, and by the subdivision, just right now, I'm just talking about the infrastructure, not the homes themselves. You know, if everything goes through and it's approved, then we'll meet and have a pre-construction meeting with contractors involved, Mr. Smith or his representative, Mr. Infinger, his representative, and kind of lay out the guidelines of what our expectations are as far as keeping the streets clean. You know, noise, there's not a lot we can do about noise. There are work hours that are allowed and not allowed. We'll go through the, you know, any issues that come, that we see ahead of time that we think are going to be issues in the construction. During construction, we, you know, we drive by and inspect all the infrastructure, storm pipes, sanitary sewer pipes that go into the ground while they're being placed. You know, we look at the, I know one of the issues was erosion control, the silt leaving the property into the street, into the ditch, the ditches in the back. We, we monitor that and try to keep a good, a really good look at what happens in the streets and how mud tracks, or we try to keep it from tracking down the street. The Alabama Department of Environmental Management also, they'll have to get a permit with them. They kind of have the more, the oversight on silt fences and, and any kind of fines that would go along with, with not keeping erosion control up. You know, they don't come in and inspect as often as we're able to. So if something does happen, you know, any of the, anybody can call in and say, hey, Dave, you know, there's dirt leaving the property, it's in the ditch, that's a problem. We go out every day, check on those kind of issues, and we'll help to get those corrected. And, and all of the erosion issues, are those, those items reestablished and working again, functioning? You know, after, we go through a series of some testing on the road, and, and with the, pass those tests, then we'll let them pave. And, and then by that time, it's ready to come back to you for a final plat so they can start building houses. But we, we go through one final inspection as well to make sure everything's cleaned up, make sure all the ditches are in place, all the erosion control, permanent erosion control is either established or is there, you know, grass, netting is there so grass can grow before we will, you know, sign off and let people move into the subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to add that that's the subdivision side of the process as the building permit side of the process is involved. There are routine inspections and also final requirements on any structure before it's CO'd, that it does not allow any runoff, any dirt, any additional flooding to any adjoining residences. And we also, you know, have a noise ordinance, we wanted to mention that. We have a noise ordinance, so work cannot begin before a certain time, certainly cannot go on through the night. And I guess a little bit of background about this subdivision. You know, there's at least eight existing phases of this subdivision in this general area, starting from the parkway and working their way west. So these were fields at one time, too, that many folks lived in. And as it's progressed west, it's been additional phases. So the progression here started many years ago, I believe in the sixties, if Billy could correct me on that, but I know it's been many, many years that this has continually worked its way west. And this is the newest phase of a very old, existing subdivision.
I was just going to give Mr. Smith a chance to give his take on the lot one, lot seven.
Billy does that, can the resident that spoke about lot one, can you explain to me, what is it that the, is HOA is responsible for? What is it that you're cutting? Is that, does HOA own that? Or what exactly is it that you're getting to?
Would you go to the mic, please?
Would you come to the mic so we can all?
Anyway, yes, we are on lot seven in Jackson Bend. And I don't know if you can pull that up?
Can you, yeah, can we see that? Yes, I can.
And they're proposing to set a house down, lot one, right on the road. Right there. Now, if he sets that house down and you allow that five-foot minimum, he will be setting a house down on a road right behind our house. Number two, since he decides to block this road, Jackson Bend Homeowners Association, we will have to build because if not, we'll have to trust him and another unknown group of people to allow us access to our own existing homeowners. We have the responsibility for common area and a, a big pond there we have to go cut. Now, John Gann, when he developed that, he allowed us to use that, never dreaming anyone would put a house on this road.
Show the plat.
So if he puts a house on this road, then our Jackson Bend Homeowners Association, we must find and build our own road. Which, just let that be known going forward to the other homeowners in this new property. What if somebody else comes and does the same thing to them?
It is not existing right away. It is actually a ingress egress along this property. And to be honest, two things are to be brought up. One, their rear pond that they taking care of is not annexed into the City of Huntsville. The second issue is that, yes, this has been their access, but they have been essentially trespassing to get to the access to?
That is wrong. That is wrong.
Okay, the, he used an improper term there, maybe, but?
I apologize for that.
The point is, you're on someone else's property, so.
And is that a, is that a stub road?
Yes, it's a turn, it's the end of a road, yes.
So, so where is the house, where's the lot that's being formed?
You see the lot with the pool?
Is that?
There will be a lot existing here, pretty much. I'm, I'm depicting the outside boundary of the property, so yes, it would exist in the center, yes.
So, so between the orange line and, and the white line that we're calling a road?
It's an ingress, ingress egress. And this is the lot here.
Okay, all right. Okay, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Smith, can you come up and address that remark? So we understand it a little bit better, what exactly y'all are doing or proposing to do?
I'm not sure if I have total knowledge, legal knowledge of the, the property in there, but I did briefly look at a deed. I think Michael brought, brought it to my attention. And, and I'm also depending on a little bit Mr. Infinger telling me, but it looked to me like there was mention of a, a road or an easement or whatever. And specifically, I, I saw, and I may be wrong, and you correct me Jeff if I am, but I remember seeing the easement addressed to Louis Fleming, who is a farmer. And they gave Louis permission to use that road to access the land across the creek for farming. I took that, that is not a public easement. It is not a easement written for the Homeowners Association of Jackson Bend at all. And I, that, that's simply all that easement was. There is a road back there. And if Mr. Infinger owns the property and he, he has a right to abandon that easement with Mr. Fleming's permission, I assume, yeah, Louis Fleming. And you, you may want to explain that a little further.
We're getting pretty deep into the wood, into the weeds here, and I'm happy to do it because that particular easement to the farmer only was effective through December thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen. There was additional easement that was granted to High Le Sync, of which I'm an owner, one-third of that, my two uncles. That's been abandoned by High Le Sync. So there is no active, there is no active easement on that. It's a, we're using the term road without understanding the legal description of a road, but that's not, that's not a road except the extent it's gravel in the middle of a field. They have been using it because, and, and we're willing to provide them other access than that particular location. But there is no easement that we're putting a house site on top of.
If, if I could ask Jim to kind of, in the process we're going through right now, because I think those are some issues probably that would come up in a final rather than at this juncture. Jim, if you could just address that, please?
Yeah, certainly what's before us is a, is a layout and a preliminary. As the subdivision's being developed in terms of grading, stormwater installation and other infrastructure upgrades, it still has to come before this body for a final approval. Until it's final, no houses can be built, certainly no houses can be CO'd. And I, I would certainly expect Mr. Infinger to figure out any legal issues he has with roads easements and thereof before he were to build a house on this lot. And, and we would certainly see this subdivision before it was final. And we could, we could bring that discussion up at that time if, if we felt necessary.
Mr. Infinger, between lot one and lot two, there's a large area there. Can you tell us, is that part of the detention pond?
That was land that we thought, we did not study. It was wooded and we thought there may be some wetlands in there, we stayed away from it. In my meeting with the neighbors of, last week, there was some conversation about studying that area and maybe using some of that land and not use, not, not putting lot one there and having a little bit different configuration. And I told them I was willing to look at that, but I don't have the information in front of me tonight, and I can't make that commitment tonight. The reason that we're asking for the, for the commission to move forward is because it's summertime and we're trying to finish these lots before Christmas and winter comes. And so it's a real, it's a financial, it is a problem for me if we delay, if we delay. And I think that, I think there's a real question as to whether or not the commission wants to, wants to violate basically its own guidelines by, we've complied in the ways that you told us to do it, in every manner that we can. And I understand the neighbors, we met with them last week. I'm going to do all I can for them, I'm going to provide access to an eight. They don't currently have legal access to part of their homeowners association land. That's not really a problem I've got. It's a problem they've got, but we're willing to help with that because it's, we're happy to help with that. But we're, that's not a reason for y'all to turn me down is because the subdivision was approved several years ago without direct access to a homeowners association parcel that I don't have anything to do with. And so I ask y'all, the, there is no road on lot one, and we're trying to be neighborly and provide access to their, a piece of homeowners association land that we have no legal obligation to, to do. But I'm asking the commission to move forward in a businesslike way as y'all have asked us to do.
Mr. Infinger, there's one question that I, and I think you can answer this, I hope you can. And it probably should be asked later, but you know, my bedtime's coming up, so I may not be here. What is the driving force of needing these setbacks the way you want them? That's what I'm trying to find out.
You're working with four or five feet of field and, and into, you know, twenty years ago, all the houses had thirty-five foot setbacks. But that's just, that's really, people would rather have more land in their backyard than their front yard now. And so moving the house up from thirty-five feet to twenty-five feet just has a little bit more with the way things are done in today's world. And the, the side setbacks is ten feet and ten feet, and if it's R-two, it's fourteen feet. It's not a great big deal. But we've basically tried to keep R-one-A zoning with just a small, small modification. And we spent a lot of time tonight arguing about something that it doesn't really, in my opinion, doesn't affect the marketability of anybody's homes around, around, around there. And we did that because Jim and the planning department asked us to do that. We wanted to do an R-two zone, and they said, we can't really support that because we want to be sure that the residents are protected. And so these other three requirements were forced? And so these other three requirements were forced on us by the planning department. Now, we were cooperative, because it, it is what we intend to do anyway. But I, but I want to, there's no damage being done to anyone by this, and the city government has done what it's supposed to do, and it has assured that fact by virtue of this zoning plat. And so the, the interesting thing, from my perspective, watching this play out tonight, is the, is that the, the systems that are put in place by the planning department and the city engineering are actually working. And that's what's happening, that's what y'all are seeing, is that the things that need to be caught are being caught. And it's coming to y'all now clean, because the city government is operating properly. But this is a, this is a, a properly done, valid, good development in front of y'all. And, uh, and even though there's been, even though you've had residents tonight who have been surprised by it coming, and they've had comments, you've not had a comment come to you yet tonight that has been specific in nature, that's in a violation of any of the regulations or guidelines that we're supposed to comply with.
And, and I agree with that, but I still wanna ask the same question. There is a motivation, and I, and I'm really trying to understand it up here. I'm not, there's a motivation to do it R2 versus R1, okay? And I'm just trying to figure out, what is the advantage with setbacks? Is it field dirt, basically?
Uh, yeah, and if I'd have known it was gonna be this much, this kinda heavy lifting, I wouldn't even tried to do it, because it's not that big a deal. It really was something that I thought was a lay-down deal, because we're not changing very much. We're changing just a little bit, uh, and that doesn't hurt anybody. And that's the reason the planning department was willing to support it, is because it was a minor change that didn't hurt anybody. And we're doing it, and, and if I'd have known it was gonna be this kinda misunderstood, basically, from my perspective, I'd have never even brought it forward, because it's not that big a deal. Well, I'm finding myself in a position now where I don't have a method of getting something different in front of you to vote on.
Fast enough.
And so I'm, I'm kinda trapped now, asking, I only have, I can only ask for what I've asked for.
No, you've answered my question.
If I could go back thirty days, I wouldn't even ask for it.
No, you've answered my question, thank you. And by the way, let me say one other thing, Mr. Infinger. There's a lot of times developers don't hang around for this part of the session, and I do appreciate you doing it.
Thomas, can you go back to the Google Earth image? Uh, Mr. Infinger provided some information that I wasn't aware of, is that he's the adjacent property owner on another, of the other side. Uh, when you go out of the house, the stub road that was in place, I mean, you've heard me say that several times. At the other end of Rothmore, what, what's at the other end?
To the south?
Yes.
Cold to south.
Okay, so, can you turn on the city limits lines? So the other side of the pond, this, that strip there, the pond and the strip are in the county.
Correct.
When was this done? I guess I'm, what I'm first trying to understand is, is how does this section, this part of the development, how is this HOA responsible for a piece of land that is in the county?
It would be my assessment that the, uh, the previous landowner deeded it to the HOA. So therefore, they are responsible for it. I, I do not know when this, when this occurred.
And here's a sticky wicket. We're the Huntsville Planning Commission, and so we don't really have any...
Jurisdiction.
And there is no zoning in the county.
Correct.
But what I don't understand is, I guess, was it deeded, it must have been deeded after?
So what it looks like is, each individual piece of property may have been, uh, annexed independently, or separately?
Uh, we would, staff would have to go back and do some research to say when this property was annexed and when it was not, um, typically.
Sampson loan, 2014. What you're looking at is the original, original property that was annexed to the city of Huntsville for Jackson Bend Homeowners Association adjacent to that pond. He kept a twenty-five-foot access from the road, just, I mean, the, uh, Bramble Road, and going all the way down the, uh, down that side. Uh, he gave that to us in 2014, twenty-three point one acres. And you see that other brown spot, you see south of us, where that pond is. We didn't own initially that whole pond, we only owned a portion of it. Now we own the whole thing. Um, he also gave his whole land to Randy Cash off the Well Drive, and he also deeded some land, uh, gifted some land to Camera Association. All of it is still unincorporated.
Now, I, I, Trey has, I, and I don't know if Trey has the answer to this. Can a HOA in the city limits maintain a deed of county property? I don't know the answer to that.
Yes, yes. Yes, they are, they are a property owner and entity, so they can acquire more property to and from.
Does it need, should it be annexed into the city?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily, no.
Okay, not, no, definitely not tonight.
Not tonight.
So, my, my point is, is we can't, we cannot consider that, unfortunately, in our deliberations, because it's not within our jurisdiction. But what I would like to address earlier, Ms. Fleming made a valid point regarding flooding. Uh, Dave, you spoke to that. Um, can you share with us, regarding her comment, uh, for flooding, what is it, what else can be done in this current area that is not addressed with what we're, uh, deliberating on? Is that something, do the homeowners need to file a complaint with, with engineering? Or how do they need to present that? Because I think there's some, some clarification regarding their existing, what they are noting as their concerns need to be expressed.
Sure. So, um, and forgive me, guys, I heard flooding about four times. And floodplain were two times, and street flooding was one time. So those are two totally separate issues. I, I just wanna make sure I have the right flooding. Which, where was that location?
Ms. Fleming addressed those earlier.
Danbury, right? Okay. No? On Rothmore, okay. Two years ago on Christmas, right? Okay. Sure.
And the property behind, uh, there was a geyser, pretty much, uh, all day. I contacted the city to come out to take a look at it, so it should be on record.
Sure, well, yeah, so Christmas Day, I was working, so I remember that day. So as far as that kinda flooding goes, Gary, to answer your question, there is not a lot that can be done feasibly to stop or mitigate that type of flooding. That was a large rain event in a short amount of time. Um, you know, there, there was a lot of flooding on, in particular, this side of town. Um, as far as the, the everyday showers that we're having now, if that were causing the flooding, sure, there's definitely something. We could come out and look at the ditches, we can look at the street system and try to clean those out, and make that better. Similar, kind of what we've done, uh, when the Grissom High School project came up and was, and was before the planning commission, we heard some issues about the ditch between Danbury specifically and the, the school. So Public Works went out and made the ditch wider for, for a section that we could get to. Um, you know, we, it would be great to be able to do something like that, if, but, but in that circumstance, it, it wouldn't do any good. That, that water that day was, you know, I, I don't know how familiar you guys are with the drainage area for the cities. Um, I didn't until I came to work here. But the amount of water that comes through here starts Pulaski Pike, up around Maston Lake, and then comes, that, all that water comes down. So Alabama A&amp;M, up that, all of that water comes down and funnels down through here. So it's a tremendous amount of water. Um, as the rivers went up and TVA tried to stage the dam, so they didn't cause flooding downstream, that caused water to back up and come back upstream towards you guys, which made it even worse. So for that particular circumstance, there wouldn't be a whole lot we could do. They, like I said, the everyday storms, like we've had the last, you know, this last weekend? Yeah, well, that wasn't the Hundred Year Storm, but, but it was made worse by the river system.
Okay. Thank you, David. Uh, so, Mr. Chair, with that, I'd like to call for the vote.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll, we'll move to location, character, and extent.
Location, character, and extent. Item one, John Hunt Park Sand Volleyball Complex, revised plan. Public hearing held.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, air monitoring station at John Hunt Park, public hearing held.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, North Huntsville Town Center Library, public hearing held.
Uh, Mr. Whitley, would you handle the vote on this?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Item number four, vacation of right-of-way. Vacate a portion of right-of-way along the northeast corner of the Eastern Bypass and US Highway 431. Staff recommends approval of said vacation.
This item is before you to, uh, vacate some right-of-way. Uh, there's an issue that has been going on. This is, uh, 431 and Southern Road in Hampton Cove, the Chick-fil-A. There's been some issues with stacking of, uh, cars in the driveway, which don't allow for, uh, individuals to, uh, exit the property. Um, so, uh, this vacation of right-of-way will help to increase the parking, uh, facility and help the movement of traffic throughout the facility, uh, at the Chick-fil-A.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, item, uh, five on our agenda is zoning. Uh, Sally Warden, would you read the zoning report?
Yes, the zoning committee met on June the fourteenth, and we have the following recommendations. One is the Sockwell rezoning, and the public hearing was held tonight. And Ashley, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On this, this one...
Can we get a motion and a second, and then discussion?
Yep.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I just wanna ask you, that, we, we keep talking about the second rezoning, the piece, that, these two pieces that are moving together, parallel, kind of, the Howard rezoning.
Yes.
Remind me again where the Howard rezoning is?
Um, the Howard rezoning, uh, was recommended by Planning Commission, um, during last month's meeting. It appeared on the June eighth city council meeting. At that meeting, city council adopted the resolution, and they also set the public hearing, which will take place on July twenty-seventh. So, um, if that item is approved by city council next month, it will be adopted on the twenty-seventh and will become effective no later than ten days following that date. Typically, they publish between the eighth and tenth day, um, following that council meeting, so the beginning of August.
Thank you.
And I have a question. Was this body aware that this rezoning was in the works when we approved that rezoning?
Yes, at the same meeting, you set this public hearing. Um, the same meeting that you recommended, uh, the Howard zoning, which had the same zoning recommendation and the same plat restrictions, uh, following that item. This particular item was, uh, set for tonight's public hearing, which we upheld.
And just for the record, at the zoning committee meeting, we had a lot of discussion about that, because we knew these were two adjacent pieces of property, and one was moving a little different. And we didn't set the public hearings on the same night, and we were explained to them why the, why the process was going like it was.
Any further discussion?
I need to recuse myself from this one.
And just so the, just so the public knows, this is, goes to city council. Uh, the other one is at city council on July twenty-seventh. If they have any discussion, concerns, they need to be at that meeting to talk to them or reach out to Dr. Robinson, um, so that you understand how the meeting works. And if you have any questions, feel free to call the planning staff as well.
It's also, if this item, uh, is recommended by Planning Commission, the public hearing for city council should take place on August twenty-fourth at six PM here in the council chambers.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is the Freeman, sorry, guys. Item number two is the Freeman rezoning, and the public hearing was held this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is the Governor's West zoning, and the public hearing was held this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, Simmons zoning, the public hearing was held this evening.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, the Wilson Cove rezoning. The, uh, committee recommends that the Planning Commission set a public hearing for July the twenty-fifth.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven is the Dunlop rezoning, and the committee recommends that the Planning Commission set a public hearing for July the twenty-fifth. Um, commission, uh, we skipped over number five, the Newcastle zoning, so whenever you wanna go back to that one.
I need, I need a second on, uh, okay. Uh, we have a, a motion and a, a motion to set a public hearing, and a second on item seven, Dunlop rezoning. Uh, is there any discussion? All, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, guys, jumping back up to number five, the Newcastle zoning, and the public hearing was held this evening.
Any discussion?
I need to recuse myself.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, of the zoning committee report, the zoning ordinance amendment we're recommending is the Board of Adjustment, Board of Zoning Adjustment, ALS, amend zoning ordinance article ninety-two, the Board of Adjustment, section ninety-two point five, powers and duties, subsection ninety-two point five point three eighteen, and subsection ninety-two point five point three thirty-six, to update the, um, Bor, the Board of Zoning Adjustment Approval Term Limits. And the committee recommends that the Planning Commission set a public hearing for July the twenty-fifth.
Move to set a public hearing for July the twenty-fifth.
Any discussion?
Yeah, thank you, dear.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item six on our agenda is invocation and extension of bonds. Uh, Jim?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, staff recommends invocation of items one through eleven.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our agenda. Our meeting is adjourned.